Okay, we're recording. Go ahead, Andy. Thank you.
Okay, I'm calling the Finance Committee meeting to order. May seventeen twenty twenty-two. It's just about three minutes after nine AM. And for those of us in council and the staff who are present, it's our second meeting of the day. And I need to recognize the members of the Finance Committee and make sure that all members of the Finance Committee can hear me and be heard. So Lynn.
Present.
Bob.
I'm here.
Matt.
Present.
Bernie.
Present.
Michelle.
Here.
Kathy.
Here.
And Alicia. So I think the one person who is not present and I think that we have a quorum of the council. This has also been posted as a council meeting.
It has, but we don't have a quorum yet. I believe we only have six members of the council.
Okay, so you keep tabs of that and let me know if the if we do get to a quorum and you need to stop and call a meeting to order. I'll just let me know. And just for everybody's information, who's not been in one of these meetings this year, the way that we proceed is that there's a brief introduction that each of the department makes to give us sort of an overview and the critical issues that you would like us to be aware of. And we've assigned one member of the council who's responsible for each of the areas and that person gets to ask questions first. And then I recognize all members of the committee and all members of the council in order that the hands are raised to ask questions. I don't distinguish in any fashion. So with that, Lynn. Give your hands up.
We now have a quorum of the council. So given that we have a quorum of the council present, I'm going to call the ad hoc, I'm sorry, the committee of the whole meeting of the council to order. I need to check to make sure that the additional counselors can hear and be heard. Let me just look quickly. Dorothy Pam.
I can hear.
Jennifer Taub.
Do you want me to say?
I just say you can hear us and we can hear you.
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Good morning. I can hear you.
Mandy Jo Hanicky.
I'm present.
Thank you.
Okay, so could you put the agenda up again for just a moment, please? And then so I want to do two things for having the agenda. First of all, just to remind everybody that pursuant to chapter twenty of the Acts of twenty twenty-one extended by chapter twenty-two, the Acts of twenty twenty-two, this meeting is being conducted by a remote means. Members of the public who wish to access the meeting may do so via Zoom or by telephone. No in-person attendance of members of the public is permitted, but we've made every effort to make, to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by technological means. I will have the agenda put back up later again on the agenda, but I want to go through the first part really quickly. There we're going to be going directly into public safety. The second item only is on the agenda to, in case there's general budget issues that people from the committee raised during the meeting, but it's not specifically planned for an allocation of time. So the next items are public safety and followed by the community services sections that are listed on the agenda that you see on the screen. And we will take public comment, but it's the process of the committee generally to take public comment later in the meeting after we've had presentations. So with that, I think we can proceed. And oh, and I guess one other thing I will just say is before that is there will be at least one item I will take up as an anticipated business and just follow up on last night's meeting. Chief Lanning Stone, welcome. And I turn this over to you and let you be the one to introduce others from the department and people that you otherwise supervise and as we go through it. So but please proceed. Good morning.
Morning, Andy. Thank you. And good morning to the committee members and the members of the town council present. With me today is Captain Ron Young, who's our administrative captain, and Captain Gabe Ting, who oversees operations. Also, Mike Curtin from the Communication Center is also with us to answer any questions that you might have specific to the Communication Center. Andy, if it's okay with you, is it okay if I go in reverse order, animal welfare, communications and then police? It's we've kind of traditionally done that just because it gets some of the smaller items out of the way. And that way, Mike Curtin can get back to Communication Center because he does have dispatch responsibilities as well.
That's fine.
So Carol didn't want to join us today on Zoom. She's not a big Zoom fan. She's an entity of one, I think. I don't think she needs any introduction, but she didn't have any specific orders given to me to give the to you or any specific stuff that isn't in her, her package or budget packaging. So I would just say that, you know, Carol continues to be the sole person responsible for all things related to animal welfare issues. And that includes, you know, responding to calls for complaints, animal bites, you know, patrolling the areas of the, you know, areas of town where there's frequently dog issues and that sort of thing. And she does all of that very well. She responds to pretty much anything people ask of her. Everybody has her cell phone number, as she points out to me. And she continues to do a fabulous job. Just going down her list for recent accomplishments. And Carol is very, very proud of most of the, all of these, actually. You know, her annual inspections of the farms. I don't know if a lot of people recognize that, but she is part of her responsibilities that she goes to every farm that's licensed in the town and does inspections annually and make sure that things are up to speed. And I think most of you are probably aware of the recent incident. We added a a farm down on Southeast Street. That was not one of the ones that was on her list. And as most people are aware, that is in a legal proceeding now, but Carol did an outstanding job specific to that farm when it was brought to her attention. You know, she continues to have a high priority of licensing all the dogs in towns, which is sometimes difficult because a lot of times students will bring animals with them and they are her responsibility. But you know, the fact that she gets about eighty-five to ninety percent of the animals that we're aware of in town, dogs license is a pretty good job on her part. For her key challenges and long-range objectives, you know, she's forever you know, dealing with the license of dogs and the inspections of the farms. So that's something that she continues to do throughout the year. You know, it seems like she's receiving more and more complaints for unleashed dogs off of the conservation areas in particular and other areas like Groff Park and Mill River Rec area. So she patrols those areas pretty frequently whenever she can. So that's part of what she does and it's part of what her key challenges are as well. She always wants me to make sure that I continue to add in that part of the challenges and long-range objectives for her is going to be the preparation for a recession plan. She's always threatening that she's going to leave me and retire, but you know, I'm not too, too overly concerned with that. So her prior year objectives, you know, we do continue to look for membership into our, we call it a regional dog shelter. We have ourselves, the town of Northampton uses services there and the town of Hadley currently does. Both Hadley and Northampton are also in the process of looking at starting up their own dog shelters. So you know, we'll continue to search and look out for, for membership into a regional approach. But as, as probably you've read, other municipalities are looking at, at starting up their own dog shelters and animal shelters. So that'll be a continued year objective. And she has done a phenomenal job every year about placing, the placement of animals that come to the shelter. If they're strays or people just can no longer take care of their pets. She's very, very proud of that. She has one hundred percent placement. I think every one of our police officers that owns a dog probably has gotten it from Carol. So you know, she, she has a way of swaying people to become animal owners and she does a fantastic job with that. Other than that, you know, her budget is mostly her full-time benefited position. There's a little bit of overtime and fuel costs and maintenance costs, but really that's about it. So if there are any questions specific to animal welfare, I'd be more than happy to answer those. Or I can follow up with Carol if I don't know the answer to those questions.
Scott, there was one question about, that Kathy sent in about
Oh, yes.
about Carol working with health department staff.
Yep. So the question was presented, do we have one? We have one person for the function of animal control officer. And in the news recently, does the person work directly with the health department staff? The answer to that is yes. Previous, the previous health director, Julie Fetterman, and outstanding relationship. Jen Brown and Carol have an outstanding relationship. Typically, a health department will reach out to her when they get complaints. It's usually complaint driven and Carol works very closely with the health department when we get issues with that. The incident down on Southeast Street was more at the state level. You know, that wasn't something that our health department would have been prepared to deal with and handle with. So that's why the MSPCA was brought in with my detective bureau to work on that specific case. But generally speaking, Carol has a really great relationship with both Jen Brown and previously with Julie Fetterman in the Health Department.
Alicia Walker has joined. You need to, as Finance Committee.
Yeah, Alicia, hi. Good morning. Just want to make sure that you can hear us.
Hi, everyone. Yes, I can hear you all. Thank you.
Excellent. So are there any questions on animal welfare? If not, take it back to the chief to proceed to the next part of the budget, which I think was going to be a dispatch.
And Mike Curtin has joined us and I'll let him jump in. Probably in a hurry because he really is the expert on this, but you know, the Communication Center continues to operate at twelve full-time positions, including Mike. So Mike has dual responsibilities as both the director of the Communication Center, but he also has dispatch responsibilities as well. So he kind of wears many hats up there. We are at twelve full-time positions. We have been notified by two of our dispatchers that they will be retiring in the next fiscal year. So we are currently in the process of recruitment. Matter of fact, I have a couple of people that are coming in later today to have discussions about potentially filling those jobs. So Mike, I'd let you kick it off now if you want to jump in.
Sure. Thanks, Chief. So I guess probably the easiest way is just to kind of follow up with what Chief did with animal welfare. We'll go through our accomplishments. Chief, did you forward my answers to Kathy, the question she had specific? Okay.
I did not. We're going to do those verbally.
Sure. Okay, so our recent accomplishments is something we have to do every year, but we have to maintain our state certifications as emergency dispatchers, which requires a certain amount of continuing education credits, have to meet certain requirements they have. We also applied for a couple of grants which are integral to our operations. A training grant which we received from the state for nineteen thousand, which helps take care of that training, pay for majority of cost. There's only a few incidentals, but very little that the state training grant doesn't pick up that allows the dispatchers to keep their certifications. Without a certification, you can't answer a nine-one-one phone, which basically means you can't do the job. And we also received a support incentive grant for a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. We use that to pay for a full-time position with benefits. And the additional is used to supplement a pretty extensive overtime budget that we have. In FY twenty-two, we were still serving as one of the two regional hazmat material hazardous material dispatch centers in the state. Participated in some ongoing efforts to investigate public safety responses with the towns and the colleges. We're able to, through COVID, to maintain our a lot of staffing. We met all our training with the COVID issues. And we also were able to apply for and procure a lot of COVID personal protection equipment from me with the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency. Our long-range objectives are always to maintain the health standards while continuing to staff a twenty-four seven operation. Even more challenging, obviously, with COVID. We work with the state nine-one-one department to maintain our necessary training, to maintain our state certifications. The state has a tendency to tweak some of these things every now and then to add some trainings, to add some additional layers. So we are always staying on top of that. We are always struggling to maintain our staffing levels. We have to balance this with contractual obligations for leave. We were fortunate enough, a couple of our, our members had some children this year, but that does lead to some openings that have to be filled. Sometimes it leads to some forced overtime, but we were able to meet those challenges. We have some essential in-person meetings, something like this today that with the COVID and the CDC regulations, some of our training, CPR training, things like that have to be done in person. So that was a little bit more challenging during the, during these times. And we're still looking at regional dispatch, anybody that might be interested in partnering up, trying to merge some centers. We haven't had the best of luck with this, but we are still looking at it. Prior year objectives. One of them to meet the state requirements to maintain our certifications. That was accomplished. To address the need for proper staffing levels, right coverage for known contractual leaves. We're always able to accomplish that. And again, sometimes that leads to forced overtime. Making people work when they really don't want to, but we have to maintain a minimum of two people on duty at all times. So it does happen. One of the things that we're looking at doing, we have myself as the supervisor, we have one lead dispatch position, which provides some after-hours supervision. We're looking to add a second lead dispatch position to provide even more after-hours or hours that I'm not here supervision. And I'm the first lead dispatcher is going to have to start spending some hours with me, learning some of the administrative tasks. Right now, it's Jason Rushford. He does an excellent job with the day-to-day operations, but there's a lot of things with the grants and payroll and things like that, which he needs to spend some time working with me, which would kind of leave some of these after-hour shifts not necessarily supervised by somebody communications. We do have the luxury of having a good relationship with the police and fire departments where some of the questions that pop up can be answered by those personnel. Sometimes I have to be called after hours to answer some things. And we are just finishing up. We're kind of waiting on the new phone system. I know the rest of the town has a new phone. We're waiting on the new phones and public safety to fully equip our backup communication center, which is what up at the North Station. So we're always looking to keep that location up to standards if we need to, for some reason, evacuate the police department where we're located, which gives us capability of operating everything except nine-one-one phones. We have a process in place, but we can't get replacement nine-one-one phones up at the the backup center in North Station, but everything else up there is in good shape. Upcoming objectives, I know I keep coming back to this, but it's critical, our training and our meet the state requirements to maintain our certifications. You know, there's always new trainings coming down the pike and it's important for us to stay on top of those. We're always looking to to address our staffing levels, provide the proper coverage. Still hoping, and we're in discussions about filling the second lead dispatch position to provide those, the after-hours supervision. We're going to be upgrading the backup communication center as new technology becomes available, new radios, some new technology that we may be able to put up there to make sure that that location is good to go in case of a circumstance where we'd have to evacuate the police department. One of our objectives is going to be integrate the CREST program into our dispatching protocols. We've got a really good start on that. Got a few things to button up, but we will be ready to go with that when the CREST responders are ready to hit the streets. And we're always looking at recruiting and interviewing and retention. It's very difficult in the communications field. It's a it's a tough profession to keep staff on board for several reasons. And that's it for me for right now.
Thank you, Sean. Were there any questions that?
Yeah. Yeah. Do you want me to put on the screen or do you want me to read them? And or if you have them, Mike, if you wanted to run through them.
I do. I'm going to switch over to
Okay.
the response I sent to Chief, but I'll go through. These are Kathy's questions. So the first question was, call trends have been down with COVID. What has been an experience year-to-date for FY twenty-two? So at this point, our call volume is only up one percent from twenty-one. That's when we started to come out of the UMass issues over COVID. We are up seven point five percent from the twenty twenty numbers. And that was as of yesterday. Do you want me to give some time if there's any further questions on that? Or you just want me to go?
Why don't you go through these and then, because there's some other counselors with hands up. So let me go through these quickly and then we'll go over to the other questions.
Okay. There was a question about what is a business line call and can these also be caused for assistance? So basically, a business line call is any call that results in us either dispatching or sending down to our station officer. So it's any call for service or assistance that has not come over our nine-one-one, what's called an answering point unit. So it's any call for service, at least in our budget, when you're looking at that number, it's any call for service that we didn't get called over the nine-one-one line to, to dispatch on. Next question is, what is the difference between EMS call and emergency medical dispatch? So emergency medical dispatch, those are the, the medical pre-arrival instructions that dispatchers provide to callers. And we provide those instructions until a higher level of medical, medical care is on scene, usually a paramedic. An EMS call is, is an emergency medical call. So some EMS calls we don't end up providing emergency medical dispatch pre-arrival instructions for. And this can occur when there's a higher level of medical care. There's a doctor or registered nurse or nurse practitioner or a paramedic. There's a higher level of medical care on scene. We defer to view the people on scene to take care of the patient. And sometimes the callers, it's either an alarm company calling in and they're not with the patient or we get calls from people remotely calling for help. And if they're not there, emergency medical dispatch is kind of limited on what we can do. Have, the next question is, have protocols been developed or in process for referral to CREST staff when in place? And best guess on share of calls? So we are pretty far along in the process. We're waiting on the final answer to what type of calls CREST will be initially responding to. And we have a pretty good idea. It just needs to be made official. Our current protocols will be, have to be updated or tweaked a little bit to include the CREST response. Some of it's on a technology side where our record system, we have to make sure that we're tracking what CREST is doing. We're currently discussing a lot of parallel responses with CREST and PD or CREST and the fire department start. Meaning that while this program is getting going, there's going to be some things that we're going to send CREST and an officer to begin with, just to kind of see how it works out. I'm sure those will be changing a little bit as time goes by. Once CREST has its standard operating protocols or their SLPs in place, we'll integrate them into our operations. Same way that we integrate the police department and fire departments standard operating protocols into our protocols and guidelines. So we'll be taking our lead from CREST on some things. If there's, if they'd like to do certain things in a certain way, we'll see, we'll integrate what they'd like to do in the, into our protocols as long as it doesn't cause any issues or things like that. Initially, I was just running some figures. It looks like CREST will respond about ten percent of the calls we take. Majority of these will probably be that parallel type response where they're going with the police or fire department to start. But this doesn't take, does not include any type of self-initiated activity. The, the CREST program they generate someone talking with Earl. A lot of the things that they'll be doing will be kind of self-initiated. We'll be documenting them, but they'll be letting us know what they're doing. So the ten percent number, that's kind of existing calls that we're looking at right now. But that's, again, it's a guess and we'll have a much better idea six months from now. Any concerns with staffing? Yes. Nationwide emergency dispatchers, it's a critical staffing level. The normal dispatcher career is between seven or three to seven years, depending on what you're looking at. It's stress, it's hours, it's pay, pay level. Those are the contributing factors to turnover and difficulty sometimes in recruiting and retaining staff. In town, our staffing is in okay shape right now. Again, we do have two retirements coming up. And what we always have to be cognizant of is when we have a retirement, we run into issues of more forced overtime. So if we have this open shifts for months and more people start getting forced, we reach this burnout thing and people say, no, just not worth doing it. And it can have a domino effect. So we have to be very careful to, to avoid that. Just in talking to the HR department, we're trying to get more of a jumpstart. We know we have leaves coming up. Get started a little bit earlier in that recruitment process, even with the training process. Get people almost fully trained. So when somebody does leave, we have a serviceable body that we can plug in there. It's, it's been a challenge. Obviously, that's a fiscal challenge when you're carrying extra staff for a little bit, but it's necessary to stay ahead of the game. And those were all the questions from Kathy's list.
Okay. Let me just, Lynn, real quickly, you had your hand up first, but if it's a real dispatch-related question, I want to go to Kathy because it was her. It's her area and then come back.
It's only related to Pam Rooney, who has joined the meeting to make sure she can hear us and we can hear her.
I can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kathy, is there any follow-up that you have?
I just wanted to, to those who are wondering where my, where the origin of my questions on page one thirty-three of the budget book is where there are all the statistics on the Communication Center. So that's what I was going down and looking at the trends and trying to understand, you know, COVID, COVID distributed thing, you can see some drop-offs, but it's this high volume. So, so it was just providing a context. Thank you very much for Mike for your answers, because I was trying to understand to what extent you're anticipating, and I know Earl will be coming on as part of this, and you can't know this, but once CREST is up with staff, will that result in potentially an increase in volume that people know they can call for help? Will there be a separate line they're calling in? So that difference between what your business line in is, is what your emergency, that's where I was just looking at, what do we have to anticipate for staffing? And I guess that's, we'll know that a year from now when we start staffing up and understanding how much of its teamwork and the current volume can be handled. So, so thank you for the answers, but that that's what I just want people to be able to see what I was looking at, Andy, on. that's what I just want people to be able to see what I was looking at Andy on. Um, they they provided a very useful table. And you can see the pre-COVID numbers in some areas were a lot higher than the volume they've been handling recently, which was why I asked about staffing, you know, because there may have been less stress on staff for a short amount of time, although COVID put its own kind of stress. So, thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you. So the the hands that I see up right now in the order that I believe they raise their hands are Bernie, Dorothy, Mandy, and uh Lynn, uh Bernie.
I'm gonna switch on. Thanks, thanks, Andy. Um, two questions somewhat different. The first question is uh what uh what employee assistance uh protocols or services are in place now? The uh dispatch center is subjected to a considerable amount of and a variety of pressures. And so uh I I'm interested in knowing, because I can't tell from the budget, how employees are supported in their emotional and physical health. That's one question. And the second question is, uh, people don't always tell the difference between UMass and the town of Amherst. And I was curious as to how um uh what kind of an impact uh it has on duplicate calls. Uh, our dispatch might get calls that are really intended for UMass in place for some.
Sure. So um as far as employee assistance, we do have the town EAP program. Uh, we do trainings on stress management, healthy lifestyles. The HR department is always sitting off things for the wellness program, which several of dispatches are partaking in. Uh, it's physically, it's a pretty sedentary job, so it is a concern. With lack of motion, um, we don't have the ability to to leave the center uh to take a thirty minute walk. We don't have lunch breaks. Um, so that can be trying at times. We have a peer uh counseling program with members of uh the police and fire departments for any critical incidents that happen. They're always including the dispatchers who are on duty. Um, those trainings or those debriefings are usually available for anybody that would like to attend, but we always um really push the people that were directly involved into attending things like that. The the fire department has a chaplain that is of service anytime that anybody needs to speak to him. Um, twenty four seven. It's amazing what he does. So we do our best for the well-being, for the mental well-being. Um, it's a lot of our training, and a lot of it is is uh venting to coworkers. To realize that, you know, we can do a lot, but we're limited in what we can do. We're not on scene. Um, there's calls that stick with people, so we do our very best in-house to take care of that. As far as the UMass and town of Amherst question, we are uh pretty proficient at determining whether the call is ours or on UMass campus. There's not a whole lot of things that are uh dual responses where we're not sure who say our car accident. Sometimes they'll be at the corner of Mass Ave North Pleasant, and you may get a UMass officer and a um Amherst officer show up for before they can figure out jurisdiction. As far as the noise complaints and things like that, um, the majority of calls that come in are the town of Amherst property and the town of Amherst Police Department are responding to them. The fire and the EMS stuff, uh, we often get the calls for the EMS side of it, where we will start the Amherst Fire Department over there, and they will notify UMass that the Fire Department is going to be on campus, and then they'll respond along with it. Um, as far as if there's a question in there, and I think I saw it in some of Kathy's questions for the police, on how much of the activity um that we're dispatching on is generated by uh the student population in town. That would be some, it would take some time to get into some good stats on that, but I could throw a guess out there that ninety five percent of our noise complaints are generated by student activity. Thank you.
Thank you. Bernie, anything else?
No, thank, thank you very much.
Okay, Dorothy, hi.
Okay, so my question was about uh a career ladder. Where do um people who work in dispatch, do they go into the police department? And also, what are your relationships with, say, schools like Holyoke Community College and their criminal justice program? Do you have interns? Um, so I'm just curious to know uh where people go in the job, and that's that's got to do something to do with retention, I imagine.
Absolutely, and uh thank you. Um, one of the things with the career ladder, and this is this lead dispatcher position, um, until we got this up and running going on two years ago, there really was no clear uh career ladder within dispatch. Um, it was dispatchers and myself, dispatch supervisor. The career ladder aspect, I think, is critical in retention. Um, it gives the employee that wants to go above and beyond, it gives him something to strive for. There are a certain amount of any job, there's a certain amount of people that love their job the way it is and are happy with it and want to leave. When they go home for the day, try to forget about the job or to their at work next. Um, there's other people that would prefer some type of advancement opportunities. That's why I I again pushing for this second, this the second lead position, just kind of provide that that coverage we need. Um, the Holyoke Community College aspect, a lot of the criminal justice, most of those students are looking to go into uh police work. We don't necessarily, we haven't had people kind of cross over from our dispatch center to go into police work, but it does happen in some larger centers. Uh, there's some centers where uh to get into the police field in not really Massachusetts, but I'm thinking Texas, California, where the candidates actually have to spend a year in dispatch before they they can move up into the the police candidate um section, but that's not the way that it works in in our our center. Um, we do have a certain amount of uh dispatchers, I think, uh, three dispatchers that have second jobs in fire service. Either usually a part-time or on-call on type basis. So I'll make that two we've one left. So, you know, a career ladder would be a great thing. I wish that I had it moving up. But that's just kind of the way things are set up here.
Would would you recommend um future police uh wanting people wanting to be police officers serve some time in dispatch?
Absolutely. I mean, right now, the the new police recruits and um since the fire department, they'll send their recruits, the police department does all the time, to sit in dispatch for a while to kind of get our perspective on things.
Yeah.
Um, it's, I do think it's valuable training, same way that dispatchers will do ride-alongs with the police department and fire department to see the type of things that they have to do. Um, puts a face to a voice. A lot of times, you know, we don't see people as often as we would like to.
Well, thank you very much.
Mandy?
Yes, thank you. Um, and thank you, Kathy, for asking some of the questions I had. There's one that wasn't covered, and hopefully it's an easy answer, which is we are a regional dispatch hazmat dispatch center, which is great, but I'm curious whether the state um provides some funds for us to maintain that as a regional hazmat dispatch center, and if so, how much?
So we've are no longer going to be that regional dispatch center. Um, they, the state has moved that responsibility to MEMA. They have four dispatchers on duty, so they've moved that responsibility. There was funding that came through. It went into a revolving fund that accounting kind of managed, I believe it was ten thousand dollars a year. But the uh the Department of Fire Services who runs the hazardous material dispatch, they've discovered that they could get it done for nothing from MEMA, uh Massachusetts Massachusetts Emergency Management, so they they moved that direction.
Yeah, thank you, Mandy. Do you have anything else? Okay, because your hand was still up outside. Lynn?
This is a theme you're going to hear from me periodically, and it doesn't just apply to this dispatch. The time to be thinking about an evaluation system that will collect all of the data that tells us how crest is doing and what has changed is now, because you need some baseline data, which we need before we start. And then, of course, we want to see the data as it grows. This is an impressive program. I think we're off to a great start. Uh, but I do want to urge and ask whether we are already looking at evaluation models that will bring in all of the disparate data from places like dispatch. Everything to uh, you know, individual stories that then are viewed for content analysis, et cetera.
Um, I mean, I could start with that, then Mike, you could probably jump on and maybe even Earl. Uh, Lynn, that's a great question. What we're find, what we found out, um, because, you know, in the end, we are the keeper of records here in the police department, and what we're finding is uh with our people from IT. The types of questions that people want answered, we don't have, we don't always have the data for. And our system here, IMC, that we use in both police and fire is thirty years old. So we have begun the process of looking for a new system, both for uh dispatch, collection of data. Um, you know, everything that we do as far as report writing and that, looking at a new system, and I put it in, I think the FY twenty four line item request for capital, and it's expensive, you know. The most recent um quote we got was in the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar range, and that's for police only. So uh what we found uh when when we started working with Earl, to see how we could start the data collection with the crest team is that it it's not easy to do. The things that the crest department is going to be looking for are capable of doing for them with the current system. So working with IT, we're kind of cob-jobbing some stuff together initially, but we're going to need to come up with a new system, and we're going to need to do that as soon as possible. Uh, Mike, anything else?
I think you covered it, chief. We can gather raw numbers for the crest team. We can know how many calls they were dispatched on, how many calls they self-initiated, um, some very basic type of calls that they're addressing. But when they start digging down into the data, our record system is not very proficient at that.
Lynn, anything else?
Yeah, I actually wonder whether there might be, um, given the national interest in the kind of program that we're developing in Amherst, whether there might be a way to uh upgrade um the system faster and actually implement a more professional evaluation um that would bring in other factors besides just the raw data. I I just really urge that, given the nature of this program, given the leadership that I believe Amherst is taking in this area, and given our own interest in wanting to have proof of concept that we really look at this now, not later. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that um some of what you described, Lynn, is what is um gonna be paid for from either our one-time uh ARPA allocation or the DPH grant had a big piece on evaluation, and there's a a strong focus on evaluation that Earl can speak to later um from that grant.
Yeah, well, thank you. Michelle?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I have kind of a multi-part question. Um, so I was a little surprised to hear the ten percent. Um, it seemed lower than I had anticipated, and I understand that this is evolving, so. But I I do have three questions um related to that. So how was that quantified, that ten percent? How did you reach that number? Um, and how many calls does that equate to per week or per month, just to give a better sense of what ten percent means? Um, and then also, do the number of current responders that we have proposed for this meet the needs of the ten percent that we're expecting right now? So those are my three questions.
Um, so I can start, Michelle. Thanks for the question. Um, and you're probably not going to like the answer, only because you know, working with Earl and and Gabe and and Ronnie and Mike and Timmy Nelson and his crew. You know, Mike started tracking types of calls months ago about, hey, would this be a call that crest could handle? And, you know, we would check off yes, and so it's been, it's kind of and it's really just kind of written down uh on paper about what types of calls crest could handle and, you know, what sort of calls we might need a parallel response on, something simple like, okay, we all anticipate that the crest team will be handling most of our um calls associated with homelessness, right? Um, that's that's kind of a no-brainer. Okay, that makes sense until we start thinking about some of our homeless individuals, and we know that some of them are um, well, quite frankly, they're violent, and that's not something I would feel comfortable having a crest member go to alone. So, you know, I guess the simple question is, we we have an idea of the types of calls we want them to go to, but we also know it's not as simply cut and dry as they're going to handle all homelessness issues, they're going to handle all mental health calls, they're going to handle all, you know, I think it's going to be a lot of communication between Earl and his members uh and the dispatch center, quite frankly. And there's then there's going to be a lot of communication between the police officers and the crest members, because I think at some point, police officers are going to get dispatched to a call, and they're going to be like, this is something crest can handle. So they'll call and say crest should handle this, and then in reverse, crest is going to go to a call, and they're like, yeah, this doesn't, we don't want to be here. We need police to respond to this. So I think what that's the type of calls we're going to see, at least for the first six months, probably a year. Um, Earl or Mike or or Gabe, you want to jump in?
Yeah, I what I would like to just add is, we're standing up, right? Right now, crest has one employee. It's me. So part of what when we talk about the ten percent or the smaller numbers at the beginning, they're the reality. You know, I'm going to need to get folks confident, and I'm going to need to be able to trust them, not just for safety, but to make sure that we're competent when we go places. Um, Lynn, to to what you talked about earlier, how do we measure the qualitative and quantitative response we're getting from folks? And and how do we kind of carefully and tactically not replicate services that are already delivered in this town? So um when you hear numbers on the lower end for the first six months, those aren't about I'm not talking about what crest's capability will be in year two. I'm saying in year one, um, we are really, really going to need to make sure we make every step deliberative and thoughtful and so that we can build on it. So it isn't about lowering the capacity that the CSWG offered us. It's really saying to get there, we need to be mindful and thoughtful also, so we can keep the folks we hire. If we go too fast, too quick, it will be hard for them to maintain this job. So um I I just don't want folks thinking we're going uh that we're going into this meekly. We're still going to be brave. We're still going to be as tough as everyone else, but we're going to do that in a way that allows us to kind of sustain.
And just follow up. I just really appreciate that. Thank you so much, and thank you, Scott, as well. Um, I think it really is important to build the confidence and to also know what the capacity is right now. So um, thank you. That's really helpful.
The only thing I could add there, and thanks, Earl, and thanks, chief. Yes, we want a successful launch. Uh, we want crest having successful outcomes on these original calls. And again, this is, as we get going, this is not including, because it's not happening right now. I don't know what percent of call, I don't know how many calls that crest will actually be out there self-initiating things. And talking with Earl, he's already been out there stirring the pot sometimes for things in town. So there's going to be calls that we will start um generating reports on that we're not doing right now, because we um haven't really launched. So that could be could be fifty calls a week for all we know. Um, so that will come back to our staffing and see how it'll impact our staffing and our ability to stay on top of these things. Um, the ten percent is basically, um, it's based on the type of calls, as the chief said, that we've been looking at now. This would be a good call for crest to go to, or crest could go as a parallel response to this type of call. Um, some medical mental things, um, some homelessness issues, some trespass issues, some just regular suspicious calls about somebody who looks like they may need to be talked to on the street, some parental things where somebody wants some parenting done or some assistance with the with a youth that we don't have anybody send to right now. So it's those type of calls, and the program will certainly grow from here, and I'm I'm sure those numbers will um reflect that growth. Uh, as far as the staffing for for crest, um, I don't know if the current staffing, was that the question about the current staffing for crest? Will it be sufficient?
Yeah, I was asking, I think Earl sort of answered that in saying that he's um a department of one right now, but I was wondering if the proposed amount of responders will meet that that ten percent need, if that's or if it's sort of going to be moving together as you see. Is, okay.
And I'm sorry, I, I wrote something, but I don't know what the third question was.
Um, I think it was, I think you, you covered everything, Mike. I think it is all covered. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good. Thank you. Then, uh, call, see Kathy, you had your hand up.
Andy, why don't you let Alicia go first, because I, I spoke earlier?
Okay.
I can wait.
I will vary from the order of answers to Alicia.
Um, thank you, Kathy. Um, I have a couple of things that I am wondering. Um, first, and I'm just going to read them all. Um, first is that I'm wondering why we're going with parallel response when CSWG specifically advised against that and said that we don't believe that that will be the right, the right, um, format for the town of Amherst. Um, and then we also talked about that Crest will be responding to ten percent of, of calls. Um, and there was something mentioned about ninety percent of noise complaints come from UMass students. So I'm wondering if Crest will be responding to noise complaints at all, or what the idea is with that. Um, and then I also just wanted to set, like, just set a reminder for everyone, because I feel like this is continuously lost in translation, that the CSWG was created to create an alternative public safety service with the intention of serving the BIPOC community who has troubles and there are existing trust issues between some people in the community and the APD. And this was the goal, to help create an anti-racist environment in the town of Amherst. This is not just to address homelessness. This is not just to address mental health issues. And a lot of people live, I, their identities exist somewhere in between all of these things. And so I think that I'm kind of worried about that. And my, my last question is that, um, we're talking about staffing levels and the ability for Crest to respond, and is that because of there aren't enough responders, there isn't enough funding? Or what is the reason Crest can't respond to the calls that were intended by the CSWG and that were recommended?
Chief, I don't mind, I don't know if you mind if I take first, because I think some of these are probably more mine. Um, so I just kind of want to work backwards, if you don't mind. Um, so I, I've, I've heard this from folks, the idea that, you know, Crest being anti-racist and biased, kind of who we work with, um, and where we spend our time. So I've met with a lot of the homeless folks in this town and they, they are people of color. They're also poor people. They're also victims of sexual exploitation and abuse. They are folks who have not been connected to systems. And so um, it has felt important to, as much as possible, be a lifeline. We're also doing events in the, the apartment complexes. Um, I'm involved in several mediations between uh, BIPOC tenants and their white neighbors in apartment complexes across the town. We, we intend to do everything we can to kind of meet the goals of the CSWG and the LEAP report and everything we do. Um, the, the lower numbers on the responses at the beginning are not about the overall capacity. It's about that we won't be able to hire anybody who's been a Crest responder before. Uh, we won't have anybody who comes in with, with a ton of experience. So it's, it's less about kind of what will look like as a fully formed group and more about how do we make sure that, you know, we're doing the right thing and we're doing it in a deliberative way. Uh, parallel responses are, actually, I thought, uh, I felt like a response to pieces of the CSWG report, the pieces about how could we be involved in situations like domestic violence where, um, there is a crime and there is a victim. And, um, we're still really game planning that out, but really our goal is, um, that when there are, uh, situations that could involve more than one sort of response, that maybe there's someone who could use some community support. Maybe there, uh, someone who could be in need of that, that would be helpful. But also that, you know, we, I recognize that redemption sits at the core of Crest's responsibilities and that even perpetrators have a right to compassion and care. And so meeting folks at those instances in which police may be the main person, uh, we still intend to support them at the county jail while they're there and when they come home. Um, our kind of overarching goal has been to serve every Amherst resident, wherever they may be, to the best of our ability. So, um, I just want to acknowledge too, this is, this is a tricky process and we're not going to be perfect. So we're, we're always, you know, hearing and learning from folks. All right, Chief?
Thanks, Earl. Um, and I think he covered the parallel response question and uh, the ten percent calls is specific to Alicia, the noise complaints. Um, there might be times where they can respond, uh, respond to a noise complaint. The issue were, and we started to look into that, okay, what calls might they be able to respond to? Um, you know, neighbor dispute, just having conflicts there or, you know, the barking dog complaint, that sort of thing. Um, what we don't, what they won't have the ability to do is take any sort of punitive action that includes, you know, writing TBL violations and/or testifying in court. So if they respond to a noise complaint of a hundred people and they get no cooperation, then what happens? Or, you know, I, we don't want to put our Crest responders in a situation where they don't want to be Crest responders anymore. Because, you know, I think, and Earl has brought a lot of light to this, there's not a lot of people looking into getting into the social services field and, you know, the recruitment part of it's going to be important for us to make sure that we get people who want to be here for the right reasons and are sustainable. So, you know, I think we are looking at the potential for them to respond to some noise complaints. And there's going to be a lot of noise complaints that they can't respond to. So for that reason, we're going to have to have potentially some sort of parallel response, at least in the beginning. Specific to noise complaints and probably other calls as well. And, and as Earl pointed out and Mike, I think what we're going to see in year one of the Crest program is going to be, you know, different from what we see in year two. So, um, you know, it's going to be a lot of, hey, did this work? Did this not work? What worked? And what can we expand the call volume to? So, uh, I don't, we just don't have all the answers yet, so.
Alicia, I was trying to come back to the person who asked the question, uh, to see if there's follow-up. So please, if you have something.
Yeah, just two additional things. Thank you, Andy. Um, the reason why I asked that, because I know we did talk about some of those things in the implementation team meeting, but we also talked about possibilities of having Crest respond and maybe having the PD like somewhere in the wing so that if they are needed, they can be called and they can't be far, but that we don't need to always have a parallel response. Because again, the purpose of the Crest was for an alternative program to exist. And to me, this is sounding a lot like just an extension of the PD. And so I also want to know, like, what specifically is the Crest program doing to differentiate itself from the PD? To create an anti-racist culture, what, what types of training and degrees that are different from the PD? Like, what is distinguishing this as an alternative and not just different, like, moving things over to different people?
That's a great question. I would say the folks who are applying for these positions are a huge differentiator. Uh, we have folks who are coming from the educational system, the human services field. Um, the training we're offering, our conflict resolution, uh, by the CRG group out of Springfield that does resort of justice between uh, inmates at the Hampton County Jail and their, their victims. Um, NVC, uh, nonviolent communication, we're receiving that training from two, uh, residents of the town of Amherst. Uh, our homeless, uh, outreach framework is coming from Jay Levy and internationally uh, kind of recognized frame for, uh, engaging with folks who are treatment resistant, which is uh, likely how folks end up chronically homeless. Uh, we're receiving, um, training from as many lived experience groups, including the Wildflower Alliance. Um, and we are kind of continuing to pursue those. Uh, I think what ultimately is going to make us look different is our actions. And it's hard for me to, to exactly quantify how our actions are going to be different. Um, we won't have weapons, which that's meaningful. Um, and I think to Scott's point, we don't have a stick. Um, we're an engagement strategy, right? Where we're with you, we're working with you, we're, um, doing our best to convince, support someone to change their own lives, because that's ultimately how this works. Um, so uh, some of this is, uh, is hypothetical and it's hard to answer hypotheticals for a program that doesn't have a real, there's nothing quite like Crest in the country. Um, not one that is so tied into municipal government. So, um, I guess, uh, coming from the state, that is my unsatisfying answer for the day, uh, and a commitment to find you a better satisfying answer in the months to come.
Thank you. Uh, Mike?
Yeah, can I just add, um, the term parallel response, that's actually something that Earl brought up. And we're going to try to differentiate this from a call response. So touching on Alicia's question, we do foresee calls where we will be telling the officer, you know, we'll be telling the officer that Crest is responding to such and such a location for wellbeing check. And that'll be the key, knowing that in this call, Crest is primary and the police officer is backup. And vice versa, there will be calls, we'll be telling Crest that we have PD responding to such and such a location for wellbeing check. That'll be the key to the Crest team to know that the police are going to be primary here till it's investigated. The police may get there and say, oh, this is good, Crest can handle this and, and they'll be gone. So we did look at that. We're just trying to, again, trying to have this program be successful. We don't want to send Crest responders someplace on their own that we in dispatch said, oh, we don't know this person, doesn't sound like it's going to be a problem. Crest responder gets there and bottles start getting thrown and now the police response may be five minutes away. Um, so we're trying to desperately avoid that type of liability.
And the police response would need to be more aggressive in that situation. So we would have, if something like that were to happen, we would have, you know, unintentionally harmed the ability for de-escalation by the police. So it's also kind of looking at the potential ramifications. You know, we don't want to be so eager that we make life harder for our, for our community.
Sean did?
I just wanted to call out that we're about twenty minutes past, um, the time we had allocated for, um, police communications and animal welfare. Um, and it seems like we're sort of stepping out of the budget conversation and more into operational stuff. And I just, and Crest is coming up too. That's a, they're going to have their own, their own time and a few, uh, one more department. Um, so I just wanted to call out that we're, we're straying into where we might have to reschedule some departments if we don't get back on track.
Good, thank you. But I'll call Kathy.
Actually, I wanted to echo what Sean just said, because I think, um, I have a lot of thoughts and in terms of my other life before the council in the healthcare world, watching new workforces be developed and evolved. And I just think we could shift this to a terrific, different conversation out of the budget side. Um, and, um, it, you know, there, there's a lot of evidence that you have to move, not just move slowly, but, uh, build experience to know what you can do. And I think there's some good models out there and people who have learned from them. And I'm not saying in the Crest world, but in the healthcare world, when they brought in huge newly trained, differently trained people and, and what they did. So I would just like to recommend that we move this and create a space to have the discussion, um, because the expectations, we, we need to do this well and it's an incredibly exciting program. And it, right now, it's not a budget issue. So I'm recommending, Andy, that we not even finance, Lynn, if we can just find a space that anyone who wants to come and have this kind of discussion. It's more of a working group discussion on evolution of human service programs. Um, and data systems too, Lynn, I think are critical. And I think we can learn from some people that don't try to buy an off-the-shelf three hundred thousand dollar one that may do what we want or may not, but really be thoughtful about it. So that was my, going to be my plea.
Yeah, I think, thank you all for, uh, possibly for getting us back to reminding ourselves that this is budget, that we can't solve all of the operational questions within the budget meeting and adjust budget. Uh, we may need to ask Paul at some point to, uh, create some kind of, um, program and maybe after this little bit more experience, we have a little, we're closer to actually being operational with responders. Um, I had a question, I'm, I don't want an answer to it, um, because it's just another example, which is experiences that we have from working with University of Massachusetts and some of its programs, working with students that are student run through the office, canvas, housing office and whether that, gives us any instruction, but I, I think that that's the kind of operational question that I don't want to take time with today. Bob?
Yeah, I do want to just raise a financial issue and that is, um, with, with the, um, with Crest, you know, becoming operational, we may find that there are a lot of hidden costs or things that we, we can anticipate now. So I would just like to suggest that, uh, you know, Chief Livingstone, Mr. Miller, um, Mr. Bockelman, just track where we are as we go into FY twenty-three and make sure we don't kind of find ourselves in a, in a hole somewhere down the, down the pike. I mean, it would be helpful to have, you know, updates or to know that we're, we're on target or we're spending too much or whatever. That's all.
Good, thank you, Alicia.
Um, thank you. Uh, so I, I am in support of like shifting the conversation, but I do want to state however, that I appreciate the answers to my questions, because, um, the way that the programs operate directly affects the budget. And so my questions, I need to understand how the budget is set up, how money is allocated and how all of this is working together and how it's going to be funded. And if, like, these questions were all directly related to the budget. So I just want to say that, because I think it was really important for me and my understanding to have these questions answered right now. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so Chief, you just, uh, we haven't really talked about the police department budget.
We can do it another day, Andy.
I, I mean, we, we should probably finish police and then, um, follow, follow the schedule we have. And if we get to, you know, by eleven o'clock, we're not on to community services, we may want to, um, invite, um, some people back. We have a, we have a meeting at the end that we can use that we didn't, we didn't fill out the agenda yet, so.
So do you want to move forward, Sean? Or Andy?
Yes, I'd say please and
Okay.
Because I think we need to talk about staffing, uh, in the police department and, uh, I know this is a logical time to do that.
So, yeah, the first item actually on, on the public safety or the police line item budget, or budget, excuse me, was the police facility. I don't think Jeremiah is here and although I know a lot about this building.
Yeah, don't, don't do his facility, uh.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, we'll do that at the end with the other facilities.
Sounds good. So I'll jump right in and try and go as quickly as I can. And I know, Kathy, you presented a bunch of, uh, uh, seven or eight questions and I want to make sure I get to those as well. And I'll try and go quickly and then if there are questions, um, we can jump on board. But uh, I think everybody's aware that, uh, so we are budgeted at forty-six police officers and two support staff in the budget. That's down two positions from last year. And I know there's a question directly specific to that and how it's impacted us. Uh, I'll try and go quickly to our recent accomplishments, unless you just want me to jump right into the financial part of it, Sean or Andy. The, the recent accomplishments and key challenges haven't changed a lot over the years. So I could, you know, jump through those if you prefer.
Yeah, um, and as you do, I'm, you know, focus on what are the new challenges that you've seen within the last year?
You know, and again, going through, coming out of the COVID year, we anticipated that, you know, call volume and calls, um, we're going to get back to, you know, what we call normal and that's pretty much exactly what's happening. Um, you know, it, it was a relatively quiet year when it came to quality of life issues in, in the COVID timeframe, for, for obvious reasons with the students not being in town on one year and then very restricted for, for the half of another year. So uh, the call volumes are returning to normal as we anticipated. And, um, we, we have dealt with those, uh, as we always have. You know, calls for services, so, so going back to two thousand and seventeen, we're in the seventeen thousand range and they're now this past year, back up to sixteen thousand and some change. And the categories, I know you all have on page one twenty-one. Um, you know, those statistics are getting back again to pre-COVID norms. And, and again, this was all anticipated and expected and we deal with it on a regular basis. You know, I'll, I'll jump right into, to Kathy's questions if, if people want. And that way we can come back with questions that are more- And that way we can come back with questions that are more specific to the town police budget. Well, I'll read the questions and then I'll give you the answers as best that I can. Question one was how many of the sixteen thousand plus calls listed on page one twenty-one are officers responding in neighborhoods? Are officers related to UMass off campus? Now, that's a difficult answer, or question to answer, Kathy. We don't track the individuals when we respond to those types of calls. In other words, we don't, we can guess that they're probably UMass students, but it's not something that we actually track. So I think Mike pointed out, you know, it's a general guess that most of our noise complaints are related to UMass students, although we can't quantify that with data. So, you know, we get there and there's a whole bunch of eighteen and nineteen year olds, you know, it's pretty obvious who's responsible for those types of parties. But to put a specific number or percentage on that, you know, we don't have the ability to track that. Question two was of the traffic stops for DUI and speeding and other significant motor violations. What are the percent related to students? And perhaps using the numbers between the summer months and, and the school months would help with that, you know? I can tell you that surprisingly, the majority of our OUI arrests are not UMass students. I was surprised to hear that when we, we did the analysis because that's something we can track. When somebody is arrested, we do ask, you know, as part of, you know, their job or what they do as a profession and they answer UMass student, we can track that. So you know, the arrest numbers are up for both alcohol and drug related OUIs. But the larger percentage of them are not, are not students. So only twenty percent of those are UMass students. And the rest are other individuals. So that, that gives you an idea of where we are with the, the OUI question and significant motor violation charges like endangering and that sort of thing. And Gabe, if there's something I'm missing, don't be afraid to jump in. A question three was, table shows a decline in nuisance house violations in FY twenty-one compared to pre-COVID. What has been the experience this year and is specific to revenues and repeat houses? So again, you know, we can, we can make an assumption that the majority of the nuisance house violations that we issue are to students. But that isn't something that we would track necessarily. As far as the fines, they are consistent at three hundred dollars and those go to, those fines go to every individual in the home. So if there are four people on the lease who are responsible for, for hosting a large party that becomes a nuisance, the officer makes the decision to issue TBL violations, each individual person on the lease gets a three hundred dollar fine. So if it's four people, it's a twelve hundred dollar fine. Typically, those get appealed to the court. What we don't have any control over is the decision made by either the judge or the clerk magistrate. So if there's a twelve hundred dollar fine, in most cases, those are reduced to three hundred dollars, which I don't like it. I've spoken to judges about it. But it's their mechanism to try and hold these people responsible in a different mechanism, a restorative justice type of thing. I can tell you that of the nuisance house violations that we do have, when we do write citations for, rarely do we get a repeat offender. So we are not going back to the same location and having to issue nuisance house violations to those locations. So that, that, you know, that's a positive that comes out of that. Question four, is there an estimate of how many calls for service might be handled by Crest or a team with Crest? I think we kind of addressed that and I'll move on and maybe Earl can jump on that one when, when his budget comes up. But again, you know, we're working on, on that and that's going to be subject to change, I think, over the course of six months a year. So Earl, I'll dump that one off on you when your turn comes up. Question five was mental health, medical assist. We're up substantially in FY twenty-one. What is the FY twenty-two experience been? Please discuss and how we respond to that, if it's a joint EMS or medical assist and where are the locations that people bring other than the ER? And is Cooley Dickinson a resource for the mental health outpatient stabilization? The first part of that, medical, mental calls are up and they're up substantially and that trend is continuing. You know, the majority of the calls that we get sent to usually have an EMS response to it. Individual is known to us and a lot of these people are known to us. So you'll get both police and fire responding to medical, mental or medical assist type calls. Our only avenue right now, our only resource is Cooley Dickinson Hospital to, to have those people transported. And quite frankly, Cooley Dickinson isn't set up to handle these types of calls. They're just not. And it's, there's no other area that we can bring and a lot of that falls on EMS when they're making the decision on where they're going to transport somebody. You know, if somebody's attempted to harm themselves, they may end up going to Bay State or Holyoke Hospital, but the majority of those transport go to Cooley Deck. And I'll give you an example. When we've had to section twelve somebody and what that is, is a mechanism for us to take care of somebody who's not capable of taking care of themselves and/or have caused harm to themselves. And that's kind of a last resort for police officers, but we do have the authority to do that, but it is not uncommon for us to section twelve somebody and have to section twelve that person twenty-four hours later. So the individual goes to Cooley Deck, gets an evaluation and they're back out on the street in twelve hours. So that's frustrating for both EMS, for Tim's people and for us as well. So that's an area that needs to be fixed. It's at a much higher level than either myself, Tim or Earl. So, you know, that's a discussion we probably need to have at a regional level. Question six was page one nineteen indicates COVID challenges for staffing and please discuss the time commitment. Do you anticipate police time in COVID receding? So we had a lot of different protocols that were put into place to minimize contact wherever possible when it went during the really high COVID time and that included things like noise disturbances. So if police officers were sent to a noise complaint, there were two or three hundred people there. The officers had to be extreme, you know, they were, even when they were masked up and everything, needed to be very careful about how they handle those situations. So we had to change protocols about how they dealt with, with the individuals, including not going into homes and that sort of thing to deal with certain calls. So, you know, that was a major change on how, how we did policing for, for a lot of different types of calls. You know, we had a lot of officers who, over the course of the time, you know, contracted COVID themselves. So you know, they're out for extended periods of time and then officers needed to be hired on overtime to, you know, fill those voids. So it was a it was a pretty stressful time. Like for every department, right? All the departments that had to deal with it, but in particular for our officers because I don't know the exact numbers, but you know, a dozen maybe or more officers contracted COVID some multiple times. And, you know, it was stressful for them. It was stressful for their families. And, and so that was, it was a tough and it's, it's good that we're coming out of that. Question seven is the department is operating with two fewer officers in FY twenty-one and please discuss how this resulted more overtime turnover or staff concerns? And what is anticipated as Crest expands with staffing? So, yeah, I could probably go on for several hours about that question. Directly responsible for the two officers that we lost last year to the defund. We had an officer that was assigned as a neighborhood liaison officer specifically to downtown Amity Street, Lower Main Street. So that, it was kind of a knockoff of Bill Laramie's position because Bill was being overwhelmed with a lot of his work. So we were looking to build on the neighborhood liaison positions. And so we, we basically just started that and then we had to eliminate it. So the officer that was assigned to Central Downtown, Lower Main Street, Amity, Lincoln, that position was eliminated. And we had an officer who was assigned directly to the district attorney's office to handle a regional crime task force, that position was eliminated. So that officer was responsible for doing a lot of investigations that were more regional and approached. You know, we had some houses that were drug houses. We had some regional sexual, sexual cases and assault cases that were at a regional level. We also had a number of break-ins and I think you probably all read about, you know, thefts from vehicles and catalytic converter, catalytic converter type investigation. So that officer would work regionally with all the other police officers that were assigned from other agencies. And so that position was eliminated. So those two positions were, were eliminated and taken on by the officers left in both the detective bureau and patrol. You know, I, I know we had addressed this a long time ago when we did a budget overview, but, you know, we only have three police officers on any shift at any time who are actually out on patrol. You know, I, I, I know that surprised a lot of people. I think a lot of people thought there were like six or seven police officers out on patrol. And so for each ship, there's only three officers. One's assigned to North Amherst, one's assigned to the center of town and one's assigned to South Amherst. So that is our regular ship. So when somebody takes a vacation day or calls out sick, that officer has to be replaced on overtime. And a lot of times that overtime is mandated. So officer coming off the midnight to eight ship finds out at six o'clock in the morning that somebody called out sick, you know, or has a family member, a kid that's sick and they can't come in. A lot of times that midnight to eight officer has to stay and work, you know, the entire eight hour shift. So a lot of our overtime is forced overtime and now that, that's just, that's just the norm. So so, yeah, and the last question, it looks like UMass has shifted its graduation date next year to the Memorial Day weekend. Will the police need extra support as a result? Can we quantify the cost in staffing and do UMass please help? And what is the plan? So yeah, there's, I'm probably not the most popular person up at the University of Mass administration right now. When I found out about this, I got on the phone immediately with some people that I'm close to up there and I, maybe we're still friends, I don't know. But I'm not happy about that decision, quite frankly, and I, I can't sugarcoat it. You know, back in two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine, when they made the transition to the earlier graduation time, it was a relief to my police staff and police officers. The month of May was always extremely dis- stressful. The weather's beautiful, students are really getting excited about graduation, large day drinks were the norm. We eliminated all of that through a lot of the community outreach that we did and quite frankly, just from not having a whole bunch of students in town in May. You know, everyone's familiar with the Hobart Hoedown. If you're not, Google it. It's, it's quite telling and I'm nervous about things going back to the old days and you know, the other thing, U, UMass being able to help out, usually when we're busy, they're busy. So it's easy to help each other out when there's a planned event like, you know, Patriots Super Bowl party or the Red Sox game seven. Those are easy. You know, the Blarney blowout, we bring in additional officers. What I don't want to see try and us have, have to do is bring in mutual aid partners for the entire month of May. Trying to deal with what we anticipate are going to become more frequent large scale party events with alcohol and, and types of those events because we've done a really good job of eliminating that through a lot of hard work over the years. And, you know, Bill Laramie was instrumental in that. As were all the sector officers. So, you know, I know we're going to be anticipating additional meetings with the university. I've stressed to them, my I'm not happy with the fact that they're changing the graduation date, you know, and a perfect example is we, this past graduation, this past weekend, we had thirteen posts that we were trying to fill for trap, just for one day for traffic for graduation. And we were only able to fill five of them. So you know, it's little things like that where by the end of the year, by the end of this year, officers have, are ready to take some breaks. And June, July and August are when they're allowed to take those breaks. We restrict time off. We don't allow officers to use vacation time on Thursday, Friday and Saturdays in the months of September, October. Yeah, March, end of March, April and May. So you know, that's kind of a big deal when, you know, you have your boss telling you, you can't take time off to go to relatives' wedding or something to that nature. So, you know, I, I'll get off my soapbox now and, and just ask if there are any additional questions that I can answer.
Thank you. Kathy, did you have anything else or?
You, you know, the one, and this can be, maybe we can try to quantify it at another time. One of my trying to link the level of service that you're providing to the fact that it's UMass. I feel they are not contributing adequately to the Amherst Town Services budget. So I think the more we can quantify some of these in terms of time. So it wasn't meant some, so your answers were great, but I, Andy, that's why I put some of those down, you know, that the, the fact that our, our, our police are often called out for and, and and contrast with summer months. So I, I don't want to pursue that, but that's where I was going with some of these questions. Is trying to get Paul and Sean on a number, you know, like X percent of our police budget is related to the fact that there's a University of Massachusetts and we can document in the following way. Or you'll see I've done the same thing with EMS and fire. So it's just trying to make a link to the fact that we are providing services but not getting paid for them because they don't pay taxes to us. So I'll just stop. That's, that's, thank you very much and for your answers.
I would, I would just also add, Kat, I mean, I kind of skirted over a lot of stuff. I tried to go through things relatively quickly. We have attempted to do in the past mutual type patrols with the university. It hasn't worked out real well. There are some issues with the University Police Patrolmen's Union. So some issues with jurisdictional issues. UMass police don't have the authority to do certain things, including some arrests and that type. They don't have the ability to write TBL violations and that sort of thing. So, you know, if we could get them to respond, they would have to respond mutually with an Amherst police officer.
Okay. So we have about five hands up and I want to question two from each of them. And we need, we do need to move on. So because we need to get on, we have Crest and Fire. And Sean, looking like we may not get beyond public safety today.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you. I think maybe we should just let the senior center and, and the public health department and veterans go and I'll reschedule them for the the last meeting in May.
And my thank you to Hillary and Jennifer for being here and I, my apology for not being able to run it as quickly. It just is a lot of interest and important questions that came up. So going back to counselors and committee members, Matt?
Hey, thanks, Andy, and thanks so much, Chief, and to everybody for the time and work that's gone into this. And you know, I just want to echo what others have said about the excitement around this Crest program. The excitement about the Kennedy Center partnership. I hope that's a, a place where we can get some good data analysis and thought partnership on this to Lynn's point. And I actually have a very specific question for the chief that I didn't give in, in advance. So if you just want to sort of say, I'll get back to you, that's okay too. I'm just wondering, and this does tie into obviously questions about Crest as well. I'm just wondering of the, you know, sixteen thousand or so calls for service, how much of that is dedicated to the, to the pre K to twelve schools? I know that's a very loaded and, and, you know, very complex issue on a programmatic side, but I was just kind of looking at it from, from the numbers. If you can, if you can ballpark that for us, that's great. If you want to just get back to me, that's fine too. Thank you.
I could probably get you some pretty specific numbers on response to schools, Matt. It would probably just take a matter of a day. I'm guessing and I can tell you from experience, they're probably not very high. You know, we, we don't have a school resource officer in the times that we are requested at the school. It's, it's for, you know, minor types, things and that sort of thing. But I could get you some definitive numbers on that, but probably not a lot of calls.
Okay. Well, thank you. If you do have anything, you could send it to Sean or through me and we'll get it to the committee. But thank you. Pam?
Thank you. And thanks to everybody. The staff time is greatly appreciated here. It's a question about overtime and I don't, I would be interested to know, there's been a lot of discussion about overtime. What is sort of the ratio of the, the hours of overtime that are paid out at presumably a higher rate and the cost of a position with benefits? Or where do, where do we sort of average out on that?
I'm not up to speed, Sean, on the benefit part of it.
So the question is rough. I mean, best of benefits, it depends if an individual selects a family plan, a single plan, an HMO, a PPO. So you know, so it varies widely. I'd say sort of the maximum is probably in the, in terms of the town's share of the cost is somewhere in the 18, $19,000 range, maybe a little bit more now. But that would be for the town share. Sonya, correct me if I'm wrong, if you've got more specific numbers in front of you. And that would be just for health insurance. With pension costs, it's, it's part of a bigger formula. We belong to a group, so it's not sort of a one to one with pension costs.
And I shouldn't have been quite that, that general, but, but if we, if we took a, if we took a, let's say just a starting officer, officer benefits. You know, how, how does that, how does that compare to, you know, what you pay out in terms of overtime and where, where does that? I'm, I'm not expressing this well.
Yeah, no, I kind of get where you're going, Pam. You know, we've been funded back in 2007 or eight. I think we are funded at 51 police officers and we are now, now funded at 46. I can tell you the overtime budget hasn't been affected drastically by changing two or three positions, either up or down. Again, you know, we're at a kind of a minimum of officers on the street. So typically, as I mentioned, three officers are out there at a time. And when somebody is, if a detective calls in sick, we don't have to replace that, right? Or if I call in sick one day, we don't replace that. I'm talking almost exclusively on patrol officers. So when the patrol officers call out sick, those are the ones that need to be replaced on overtime. And we usually always exhaust our overtime budget and it's $290,000, I believe. So you know, it, it would, would it be easy to say if we had another two officers, would the overtime budget come down to the amount that those officers caused? It doesn't really work like that. You know, unfortunately, so I hope that kind of, I mean, our, our salary is $46,000 and it goes through 10 steps to 65,000. And of course overtime is paid at one and a half times the officer's hourly rate. So you know, if it's a lot of young officers working overtime, we can get a lot more out of them than some of the older officers, but and that's typically how it works.
Thank you.
Yep.
Jennifer?
Yes, thank you. This is more probably a request than a comment about the budget, although it might, it does pertain to what Kathy mentioned of how much of a police department calls is related to having UMass in our town. But the comment was made that I guess I would ask if when the police respond to noise and nuisance or any, it could be van, you know, any other calls to a student house, it's pretty clear it's an absentee owned student house or it's a student house, whether the owner lives there or not, presumably it's, I mean, it's probably absentee. What, why couldn't that just be recorded? That the call went to a student house. And I was very interested because it's confirmed what many of us who've been following this for years have noted that 95% of noise and nuisance calls tend to be related to students. Because on the council, we are getting an increasing number of emails from throughout the town where more and more homes and what have traditionally been, you know, streets where non-student households have lived, that there are more and more absentee owned student houses. And there are noise and nuisance and other concerns related to that. And I think there's been a response on the part of people that this may not be part of their daily lives, that this is an exaggeration, that it's not so much happening. And it would be really helpful as we're trying to document this, if there could be some just notation when police respond to calls that it's a student house. And it was encouraging to hear that when the Amherst Police Department's experience has been with that, when they respond to a house once and they give a noise and nuisance violation, that they're not called back. Although I know in one of the neighborhoods I represent, like 20 Allen Street, 35 Phillips, 164, 174 Sunset, and I may be wrong, 342 Lincoln, that there, you know, there definitely are houses where the repeated calls. And then of course, there's the issue of every year when the occupancy changes, then there's calls to the same house, even if it's different people living there. So I guess I would just on behalf of many neighborhoods and an increasing number of neighborhoods in town, ask if there could be a way to be able to keep data on when calls to, from the police department are to absentee owned student houses. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, and I, I would agree with you, Jennifer. We're finding, we're certainly finding more and more homes are, are being purchased in non-traditional student housing areas, correct? So somebody buys a house and they rented out the four students and where we end up responding there a lot. And the turnover is an issue as well because you're getting new people in there the next year. And so, you know, we're, we're continually responding to the same location a lot of times because certain houses get reputations. And hey, this is a great place to live if you like to party, right? And you know, we are cognizant of that. And Bill Laramie does try and track certain houses for sure. But yeah, there might be a mechanism where we can just say, yeah, no question, student housing and keep tabs on that. I can speak with Gabe and Ron about doing that, that tracking type thing.
Yeah, thank you. And even if you're not keeping tabs, that might be a lot of work, just so there's a record of how many calls are in student houses. Thank you.
Yep. Thanks, Andy. I once asked the police chief I was working with, what, if he could have any kind of innovation in the system, any kind of technology, what would he like? What would he prefer? And he'd said he wanted a DA who could go from arrest to conviction in 45 minutes. So that question is about court time, chief, and how much it impacts us and how relationships have been going with the, with the court system in terms of managing officers' time in court? Sure. So court time, mostly because of COVID. So there are a lot fewer arrests and a lot fewer interactions. So, you know, take COVID years out of it, but and we're also part of the restorative justice program through the DA's office. So what that does is eliminate the need for officers to go to test and then testify. So officers aren't testifying in court as frequently as they did. Or like when I was a young police officer, I was, seemed like I was in court every day. So, and there's a lot more desire by the district attorney's office not to have things go to trial. It's just, it's they're backlogged. The police departments are backlogged. So the, the more serious crimes are getting the priority. So fewer and fewer of course, are taking issues to court, criminal court I'm speaking of, and our court hours are down substantially. Yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Chief, we all know that radicalization and hate crimes are up over the country. And we just saw an example of that in Buffalo a couple of days ago. Are, are, are you tracking that or monitoring that in Amherst? And is the budget any hindrance to your ability to do that?
So we do track that and we are mandated by law to track that. And Ronnie, are you still on?
I'm here, chief.
Okay, maybe you can speak to the, the, the tracking of hate crimes and that sort of thing, whether we've seen enough increase or decrease in that.
Actually, we are, ironically, the, the numbers have stayed pretty much the same over the last decade or so. We're required, as, as you pointed out, chief, correctly, that we're required to report those on an annual basis to the state. And the state actually keeps those on file and then compares them to the, to the statewide averages. The AG's office uses that data and they help facilitate trainings, law enforcement techniques, et cetera, et cetera. So yes, we do track those. Fortunately, we, we are on the lower end of the state numbers, particularly in the eastern part of the state. There were some shocking and surprising numbers this past year. That was impacted like many things by COVID a lot because a lot of our calls for service and a lot of response to service were diminished over the last two years. But yeah, the short answer is yes, we do track that data and it is readily available.
Typically, Bob, those calls would go directly. When we do get those types of calls for investigation, they go directly to the detective bureau who handles those. So it wouldn't be a patrol function.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Mandy, and then maybe we can move on from police, but.
Thank you, Andy. Just two questions. I know Kathy asked about the increase in mental med assist calls. It looks like it's been really high up. Are those something that CREST will be able to handle in the future? You know, is, is that a result of a change in protocol? Or, you know, just can you expand on that a little bit more as to what, what is going on in when APD responds to those types of calls? And then the other one is a staffing question. I looked at the charts and, you know, you have on the, I, I don't know which side it is. You have a captain or lieutenant and a sergeant supervising six detectives, it looks like. And it looks like there are nine supervisors in the LTs and sergeants supervising 26 patrol officers, which in my estimate was an average of one and a half supervisors for every four patrol officers, or essentially one for every three patrol officers and one for every two to three detectives. That seems like a whole lot that might not be necessary, especially when we look at our fire department, which has one supervisor for every four to five firefighters EMT. So can you explain why we have so many supervisors? And then a similar question, which is you talked about the overtime needed for patrol officers. And when one calls out because there's only three on, are our LTs and sergeants on the operation on that side taking over those shifts since they are presumably on shift at that time? Instead of calling in overtime? Are they going back out on patrol to avoid overtime?
Sure. So every shift has at least one sergeant on that oversees the patrol officers. The four to 12 has two supervisors on, so one sergeant and one lieutenant. And that's the same with the midnight to eight. The biggest reason is one of the largest litigation issues in policing and police work is failure to supervise. So we have found in our agency, the, well, it's basically nine supervisors in the patrol and that oversee the patrol officers. That includes a sergeant and a lieutenant. And one sergeant is also working 7 p to 3 a.m., which is on the desk that oversees prisoners brought in, answers questions of the public, oversees the phone lines, that sort of thing. So that's another supervisor is assigned there. In the detective bureau, you have a lieutenant that oversees six of the detectives. There's a sergeant that also handles detective work. So in essence, that sergeant, for instance, is currently working on child sex exploit, sexual exploitation cases. So in essence, you have seven detectives being overseen by a lieutenant. But yes, sergeant who handles more sensitive cases, I guess is the best way to put that. When it comes to overtime replacement, so yes, when a sergeant is out sick, he's replaced, he or she is replaced by a sergeant. There are times where if it's not a busy time of year, like take the summer, for instance, if a sergeant takes, calls out sick and there's a lieutenant on duty, that lieutenant would just fill in. So we don't, we don't hire somebody if we don't have to. So that lieutenant would be responsible for going out on the road on patrol and filling in where that sergeant has, has either called out sick or maybe used a a vacation day, that sort of thing. But current, so like currently a good example is one of our sergeant is out on extended medical leave. He broke his leg and he's going to be out probably for six months. So a lot of that, a lot of that replacement is being taken over by a lieutenant who would be working those hours normally anyway. So not all of that vacancy is being filled on overtime. So, you know, those types of things happen. If there's an extended patrolman who's out, we would have to juggle the work assignments and move bodies around to, you know, not use up all of our overtime budget on one individual. Let's say somebody, a patrolman is out because they were injured or something of that nature. Then we have to move bodies around. Sometimes we have to take detectives out of the detective bureau and put them back in patrol in uniform to fill those vacancies and that sort of thing. So there's a lot of juggling that goes on. I, I hope that answered most of your questions. Is there one I missed?
No, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I know we want to get beyond police, but I want to see if Alicia has a question that she really needs to get out. So Alicia?
Yeah, I just had a quick question about like staffing level and availability and if it were be a help, if it would be a helpful thing to limit things like detail, because I know we have like police officers who work like traffic and why can't we just have a person direct traffic like we have cross? And if that would make a difference or how that ties into how everything runs?
Sure. So officers are only allowed to work details on their off time. So, you know, if it affects and they're restricted by how many hours they can work in a 24 hour period. So you know, the only time an officer can work in traffic detail is on their time off, like if it's their day off or that sort of thing. And that's when they, you typically would see them working. Construction, construction companies, EverSource, they have the option of hiring civilian flag people if they want. So they don't have to hire a police officer if they don't want to. The majority of them prefer to have a police officer out there, but you know, that's not our decision. That's not our call. That's up to the contractor. So if somebody wanted and if it's a state job, what I did learn was because they changed that law 10 years or so ago, if it's a state job, it's more expensive to hire a civilian flagger than it is to hire a police officer because they get the union rate. Which I kind of found surprising, but it's, is true. So you know, we do monitor the number of hours people work, how many they're allowed to work, that sort of thing. I think that's about it. Thank you, Alicia.
Thank you, Scott. And just to clarify, so that doesn't, doesn't come out of overtime budget or any budget. That's a completely different thing.
Correct. As a matter of fact, the town, the town makes money off of that. We charge 10% to bill those people to do the paperwork and stuff. So we, the town does get a little bit of money out of it, but yeah, it doesn't cost, doesn't cost my town or my department or my anything other. It comes strictly out of the contractor, whoever's employing that officer.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, so thank you, chief, and both the captains, Ron and Gabe, for being with us. Of course, welcome to stay because we're still in, going to be in public safety. Sean, I assume we're going to fire next?
Yep, Chief Nelson's here and he will lead us through fire.
Okay. So, Chief, turn it over to you and you can introduce people to you with you.
PD is a tough act of all fall, followable dude, will do our best, I guess. So, you know, so there's me, I've got assistant chief Strom, Strom, and assistant chief Holmes that we with, with us as well to, to chime, chime in as needed. I'm probably follow, follow, follow Scott, Scott's lead and, you know, if you want, we talk, talk about, about a challenge, challenge, challenges, of course, I mean, but you know, just a couple of the conquer, accomplish, that's, that we. I mean, but, you know, just a couple of the conquer accomplishments that we, I want to bring up. I mean, we've, we've done well coming, coming out of COVID, trying, trying to get back, back, back on track. We've done, we've done, done well in, in the grant arena. We keep, we keep to do, doing well there to get, to get equipment for, for our department. One, one thing that I've kept, kept up is that we've, we're, we're, we build, we keep building, building up our supply of protective, the equipment, you know, code, not, not so much because we're, we're, we're that, that concerned with COVID or, 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 or anything like that. But just, 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 you know, the, the, the availability is there. And we build, build, built up our supplies to a healthy, healthy, healthy level. And that's, and that's allowed, allowed us, for, for instance, to assist the homeless shelters, shelters, shelter with supply. So that's, that's, that's one of those good, good things. And again, we've, we've done, done, done well with grants in the past, past year for different type, type, types of equipment for our line personnel. Challenge, challenges, as I said, I echo Scotty. You know, our, our call, call, all, 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 we miss back, back up to pre-COVID levels. We're, we're back, we're back there. And at the same time, what I like to say, if it weren't, weren't for bad, bad luck, we'd have no, no luck at all. We, our staff, staffing issue remains. But at, at the same, same time, we've, we've, we've got quite, quite a few, few folks, folks out long, long term in injuries, long term ill, 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 illness. We've, we've had some, a couple of resignations, you know, actually, which is good, good for them, bad, bad for, for us. They, they, they went on to bigger and better things, which is, which, which is great, 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 great for them. But it still leaves us with, with, with holes to fill. So, so here, right now, we're probably, we've got about nine, 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 nine slots, slots that are, that are empty right, right, right now because of injuries and illness. So, and then, you know, we, we, we did, did add four, four additional positions, but that takes time to, you know, to bring folks on, get, get them trained, 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 trained up. And, and again, we're still, still short. The whole world is experiencing, we're, we're having supply, supply chain issues. In terms of getting, keep, keep, keeping our equipment in, in, in top, top shape. It takes time, it takes, takes time, time, time to get, get the supplies in for us and for, for our vendors. And then, and of course, the cost has gone, 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 gone up as well. As everyone has seen, I mean, because fuel, fuel prices, that's, that's affecting us as well. So, you know, those are, those are some of the challenges, challenges that, that we've had. And we, I'm sure, sure there's going to be questions and we can kind of dig, 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 deeper. But we're, we're open to questions.
Kathy, could you have anything to start? You're muted.
I know. I'm trying to unmute. I have a window open. Yeah, thank you, Chief. I, I sent a few questions in advance, but I know not a lot in advance. But I just want to pick up on one thing you just said, and then I'll ask my other questions. On the nine out, nine slots empty to injure, injury and illness, is the injury rate higher than you saw three or four years ago? How much of this is a staffing issue? You know, is, or is that, yeah, so how does that compare to?
I think our, our injury rate has remained, remained the same. This is a labor intensive business and it's a dangerous business and folks get, get, folks get hurt. But I don't, I haven't really, I don't believe we've had, had, had a spike, if, if, if you will. I mean, we, folks, folks, folks get, get, get nicked, they, they get hurt and they, they take it and, 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 you know, they, they, they can't, 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 can't come, come, come to work. But we've had a mix, mix of that. We've got, I mean, as, as, as a COVID restrictions have been, been, been reduced, especially when they, they took the, the mass mandate away, away from, from schools. A lot of our folks have kids and the kids bring stuff home. And whether it's COVID or not, we've seen an up, an uptick in people just getting, getting sick. And the smart, smart thing is, don't bring it in here because then it'll spread, spread, spread like wild, 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 wild far. So that's, that's a big part, part, part of this. Our injury, injury rate has not really in, has not really increased that, that, that much. That is a fear, fear, fear of mine, and I've stated that in, in the past that, you know, not, 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 not any increasing our staff, staff, staffing could at some point increase our injury rate because you have less, less folks doing more, more work and being, 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 being exposed to more, more hazards, so.
So, so just going on that, well, my first question was, we're, we're adding, we either, either are adding or have added four staff using ARPing funds. Does that staff get you to a point where you staffing is more adequate? Can you comment on your sense of with those four positions? How? Yeah.
Well, those will, will, will help, but they're not going to help right, 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 right away. I mean, we've, we've got, got some, it, it's going to, it takes at least a year, a year. You got to get, get, get some, some, some full, fully trained, trained, trained up. And that's in, in house training and the Academy. So, and then there's the EMS side, side, side of the house as well. And even with, you know, then those positions, we, we, we still have to, have to fill, fill, fill. We just, we just finish hiring, hiring for those, for those slots. Their first day is Monday. But it took us a while to, to hire, 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 hire folks. As you know, throughout, throughout, throughout the world, world, it's tough to bring, to bring, bring, to bring in new, new, new hires. The pool in our, in our state, in our area, area, is quite, quite small. And we're not the only game, 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 game in town. There are a lot, a lot of departments out there that are hiring right, right now. So people have, you know, so, so those can, can, candidates, it's a, I guess it's a buy, buy, buyers market, no, sells, sells. So it's always a market, I guess. They can kind of pick, pick and choose where, 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 where they, they want, they want to go. And combine that with the fact that the, that the pool of town, of qualified talent, talent, talent is small, 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 smaller. It makes, it makes it difficult to bring, bring folks in. And that, and that, and, and that, in that, take, adds, adds to the amount of time, you know, to get, to get folks, folks spun up. So the addition, addition of the slot of the position is great. But it's, it's going to, it's going to take quite, quite a while to re-realize the benefits of that. And then add on to that, that we're already behind the eight, the eight, the eight ball now with folks that, that are out. So, you know, I won't say, you know, one, you know, one, one step forward, forward, two, two steps back. But it's, it's, you know, right, right now, we're trying to try, try, trying to get to a stasis, stasis point. So, and, and, and it's difficult because it all takes time.
All your.
Yeah, I think the chief nailed it. I mean, we did add four new positions to this, to the fire department budget. That's a significant addition to the department, ten percent, basically. And that's, but as the chief said, it takes time. We had interviewed and the, the fire department had interviewed and selected six people to offer jobs to, four accepted, two didn't. So now we are going back out to find those other two slots we needed to fill. We were trying to get ahead of the, the curve because the chief was, was absolutely right that when you hire someone, they're not, if they start Monday, they're not really available to them until they get through the academy and do all the things that they need to do. And, and they just don't walk out and suddenly they're able to do the job. It takes a lot of time and the fire department has a very extensive sophisticated training regimen they have for their new firefighters, which is, that's why people appreciate the services that they get from the fire department. But I think, you know, we're, you know, there's just a lot of turmoil, a lot of changeover, you know, people retiring, taking new jobs. It's, we're, they're not immune to what's going on throughout the entire country. And, and so just, we're just running to catch up. And the quality of the staff we got, we're getting good people. But, you know, they, really, a lot of people have options too. And they choose not to, they choose, they're looking at different departments. Every department is hiring right now. So it's a really competitive marketplace, as Tim said. But, you know, I think we're working as hard as we can and I, you know, to, to get promotions filled and as people do retirements. And we interviewed yesterday for promotions for captains, but then that creates a new vacancy, right? Make that appointment and we can't, and so we're trying to get ahead of the curve with HR. But it's a, it's a tough world right now.
And, and, you know, I'd be remiss, so I did, did, didn't say kudos to the town for steps, steps, stepping up and adding for new physicians. I did, I did additional. I mean, this is some, some, something that's been a hot topic since before, before I came. And the town, town finds, found, found a way, way, way to step, step up and add, and add, add, add those four. It's, it, it is a great step in the right, 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 right direction. I mean, I've, I've said for ten, ten or twelve years, we, we need, we probably need, you know, in addition to those four, another four, 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 four to six, six more to get where, where, where we need, need, need to be. But you can't do that overnight. It's not, you know, it, it takes, it takes time, it takes, takes money, it takes, it takes, it's, it takes, it takes a lot of work. But this is a great step in, in the right, right direction. So.
Andy, some of the other questions I asked are related to the trends and the data that I saw on, on page one twenty-five for Fire EMS. And rather than take time to go through that, I sent them in late. But some of them, if we could get answers to a few of them, Sean, maybe later, and no one else has seen them. But examples are, if we, how many of the, when EMS goes out, how many end up at the hospital where we can bill it? And how many we don't? And I can sort of see it in the data. But how many of the non-billable went to Applewood and the Arbers for lift and assist? And at one point, we talked about, could we bill those to private insurance as a way of avoiding an emergency trip? So some of them are finance related, that we don't get paid for those trips?
I think, actually, I think, give, give a little background on that or, or, or some context. I'd like, like the Assistant Chief Holmes said to jump, jump in, in here to kind of add some context to that because it's more than just data, data and numbers.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll try to answer the question regarding particularly Applewood and going to the Arbers. So COVID, COVID changed a lot of things. And one of the things that happened at the Arbers in particular is that once they figured out that people couldn't come from the outside and to help them, they had to become a little bit more self-reliant and figured out how to do lift assist on their own. So that was one of the strange positives that comes out of, of, of the pandemic. We didn't do very many, we do some lift assist on Applewood, but not nearly the, quite the same format. And remember that when you're at Applewood, you basically live in your own place. And there's not really this type of staff that you have in the assisted living format at the Arbers. Those are, they're two different types, styles of housing and two different levels of assistance that you're going to get in, in those type of residents. So they, it'd be important to kind of separate those out a little bit. Was there another billable billing question that I could try to help?
Well, I was mainly looking that in the past, you know, and so it's post-COVID, it's, you're going to have, we're still in the, moving from hopefully to post-COVID. But my, my sense is that the ambulances were going out a lot without resulting in a hospital visit and then you couldn't bill for that trip. And I'm, you know, just thinking in terms of billable. And I remembered, so it may not be that, that at one point it was mentioned that there was some discussion with Blue Cross or the insurers that if one of the things you were doing was basically doing home healthcare when you went out there and prevented, could you bill to insurance? So I'm looking at the revenue side of the department and I don't know where those discussions went.
So those discussions would require us to do more home healthcare, or specific home healthcare, and then try to figure out what the Medicare, Medicaid availability for funds would be. We don't really offer that service yet. It's, it's prevention for EMS and we haven't really ventured into that at this point. It is a staff-driven idea. We would need more staff and we would need to do a little bit of extra training with that staff and some small but important diagnostic equipment that would go with that. If you looked at other, other services that provide those kind of mobile integrated healthcare across the state or even in other states. So right now, that's in the idea mode, knowing that this is something we need to look to in the future, but we haven't started doing it currently. And, you know, when I met with Earl last week, these are things that we might be actually, we'll work together and share in some future endeavors, not unlike what we found when we got into the pandemic and we started working with the public health and we could be a force multiplier for public health when we got into the vaccine clinics, homebound visits and things like that. So we have the means, we have the capability. If we're going to build something out, we would actually need to add some more staff that would be able to specifically work in those areas, or more specifically work in those areas and still cover all the emergencies that we do now. So I hope that answers most of your question.
It, it does. And then the other one is just my UMass related question. When I'm looking at the service levels, what share of staffing trips of ambulance are related in any way to UMass? But, but we can come at, you know, ambulance trips, wear and tear on our vehicles. There, it's a huge proportion of our population and I'm not sure we get fully reimbursed for it. So.
It is, I mean, we, you know, we, we go to, go to UMass quite, quite, quite a bit. But you, but in, in, in the trend, trend, trending, what we found is that U, UMass does, does grow, but at a very, 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 very slow rate each, each, each year. Our, our growth, our largest amount of our growth in our call, call volume is from, is, is from, is from town and our surrounding, and the other town, 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 towns we serve, service. That's where most of our, our, most, most of our growth, growth is. So.
My request would just be, could we, we don't have those trends in this. So if we could get just something separate, and it's not essential right now for the budget discussion, Sean, but I haven't seen that kind of trend report for a while. I, I saw the earlier studies when Hadley was leaving us.
Yeah. Kathy, just to clarify, you want, we definitely have numbers on calls to the UMass campus. And Mike's still here, maybe Jeff knows this. I don't know if we have solid numbers on calls for students, which I think was your, what you distinguished with the police when it's off campus.
Not current ones, no. Because, and please recognize that, as Sean said, those numbers you see for UMass are on UMass campus proper. They don't reflect going to Phillips or Allen or Nutting in that area. They are, they're specifically on campus buildings and residence that we go to there.
Jeff, we might be able to ballpark, though, I think in the past, you've been able to look at age.
We have, we have that. Report, yeah, we've done an age-based report and then tried to push out addresses that would push us into, you know, if it's on College Street, it's much more likely to be Amherst College. If it's on, you know, West Street, at eight ninety-three West Street, I know it's Hampshire College. It's, it's those kind of things that you can do that are not super scientifically specific, but pretty, pretty close.
And that's all I'm asking for, you know, I, when the earlier ones, you could see what was happening on Friday and Saturday night with the ambulance trips to the hospitals. And it may not have been to the UMass campus, but it was. And it may not have been to the UMass campus, but it was a party or.
You can extrapolate and say, well, yeah, this, this, this was a student driven.
I'm just looking for any way we can start to document across our departments of the draw UMass has on our budget sets. You know, so Sean, that's, you know, I don't need that answer now.
And just to be clear, we do document very carefully the calls to UMass campus because that's how our, our billing arrangement with UMass, our reimbursement arrangement with them works is based on calls to the campus. So we do have good numbers on that piece of it and trend on that.
You know, I had one homebound elderly resident. He's not alive anymore. He said he and his wife did the best they could, never to fall or need help on Friday or Saturday because, because the ambulances were too busy to come to them. So they would, not that you can choose when, when you need.
No, but you know what? We're not too, too busy to come, to come.
They just had a sense and they.
Right. I understand. And we, and we, we do a lot, a lot of work to let, to let folks know that that, that should not be a concern, concern there's. We, I mean, if, if it's not, not us, we have a very ro- robust mutual aid system. And at the same, same time, on, on, on those busy nights, we are still going to get advanced life support care from, you know, from an Amherst fire, 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 fire crew at, at your side to take, to take care, to take, take care, care of the issue. The ambulance, the transport may come from another town, but you're going to get paramedicare at your side from, from Amherst fire, 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 fire medics in a timely fashion. So.
So let me, Kathy, can we move to the other two counselors and okay, Michelle?
Thank you. I noticed that the rescue responses, which I think include motor vehicle calls have gone up from 386 in FY18 to 848 in FY21. That just really, that stood out to me. And I'm just curious if something maybe has been added into that item that wasn't previously there, or if that's a true increase? And what, what is, what's happening there?
Oh, it is a true, true in, in, in increase, but I'll defer for, for that, that to Jeff and Lindsay to fill, fill, to fill it in.
So there is a change. We, we changed our, how we dispatch and how many people we dispatched to certain types of calls. March of 2020, actually. So some of what you're seeing in that is the fact that the overall fire responses reflect the actual number of times the fire truck is really going out for calls. And in the reporting system we use that goes to the state and to the national agencies that collect it, that gets put into that rescue category. So that's why you're seeing it there. And what that means is to say, we have a chestband call, a shortness of breath, stroke, cardiac arrest, motor vehicle accident, unconscious over 30, a significant trauma. We will send an engine with an ambulance. So hopefully what we're sending is up to five people to go take care of that situation that is critical right then, right there, and hope to stabilize it at the scene. The other thing that happens is that it allows for, by having more help quicker, we can take care of patients better. And you think about the people that you see these days, we're all sort of, myself included. You know, we're a heavier generation than, than 20, 25 years ago. People are heavier to pick up and move, or even our stretchers, as nice as they are using hydraulics are heavier to carry. And we bring a lot of equipment, defibrillators, bags with us. So having four or five people to help you actually manage patient care, treating somebody and then even extracting them out to the ambulance and all the equipment, having them there in that first 15, 20 minutes makes a big difference. So some of what you're seeing is reflective of the fact that we changed our, our how we, how we dispatch and how many people we sent to the initial call for help on certain types of calls.
And Michelle, that's what the notable trend, not as detailed as what Jeff just explained, but that's what the trend is trying to state about the change in protocol.
Can you just say, so just so I make sure I understand, is there, there's nothing that has really changed in terms of what's happening out there? Between FY18 and FY21, I mean, that's a huge increase. So I'm just trying to understand why.
It's a better reflection of sort of work done than we were compiling before.
I see. Okay. So it's a matter.
Better way, it's a better way. There isn't necessarily a, we're not doing that many more car accidents or that many particular types of calls. It's sort of how we're handling those calls.
Great. Okay.
And how we're documenting those calls that has changed, but it gives you an overall look at, it doesn't tell you that we've done that many more fire alarms. It's telling you that we're doing that much work. And if you had, for example, if you had two separate agencies, a fire agency and an ambulance agency, you would see that same kind of call trend. So if you were in Springfield that has two separate agencies, you would see those numbers. And yes, they go to a lot of the same calls. And this is, this is giving you an idea of sort of total work done.
And, and you know, and, and, and benefit, which is why, why we changed is that there's study, Jeff, Jeff, Jeff found, found, found some studies that show that the out, the patient out, out, outcomes are better with the more, more help, more help, help you send, you spread, spread, spread the work. You have a great, greater number of, of eyes on this situation. Nation work, work, working to get, get that better outcome. The other, the other piece is, is that you spread, you spread, spread the work, you spread the weight. It means there's like, there's, there's less, lesser chance for injuries. One, one back injury, because you know, you, you only have two, two people moving a large pay, pay, pay patient. Can, I mean, besides, besides sides of pain and flip, flip it on individuals. There's, there's, you know, the law, the law, the law, the loss, loss of those folks for X amount of time or surgeries and that, and that, and that type of thing, which we've had here. And one of the things, things that, that has helped is the, our power, power stretchers that we've had. Now Jeff, almost 10 years, oh no, almost 10, 10 years. And that, and that was driven by back, back in, in, in reasons or surgeries and just to spread, 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 spread the work, the workload. That means there's less, there's going to be less stress on, on, less physical stress on, on our staff. And means that they're able to, you know, to do, to do, to do, to do our job. So.
And just if I could just simplify it, it, what is happening, what used to happen is we'd send an ambulance if there was a medical call. Now we send an ambulance with a fire apparatus with it. So we're sending two vehicles to a situation where we used to send one vehicle. And you're seeing with that, and that's, that's based on the fire department's assessment that that's safer as they explained. They feel that that's a better way to respond to medical calls. And that's why you're seeing that number, that's why, that my number is being reflected under rescue calls. So, but instead of sending one vehicle, we're sending two vehicles to the same call. There's not more calls, more apparatus responding.
That's helpful. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, we, I want to keep moving along because I want to have some time also for Chris and so we can finish meeting Mandy.
Yeah. So my questions actually relate to the same question because and it goes to budget in that, you know, so one question I have is, are we the only town in the area sending these multiple vehicles to one call? And are we the only town sending a fire apparatus as the second vehicle instead of another ambulance? And then as that relates to that, what is the cost on the capital to adding in a fire vehicle to all of these calls? An extra 500 or 600 or so a year, it looks like, given some other numbers, some are between 500 and 600 a year. In terms of how long the vehicles will last, we already know that the fire department wants a high, a quicker replacement schedule for our ambulances that, that we've, we're not on necessarily a ideal replacement schedule for the ambulances. But what kind of effect is this going to have on the fire apparatus too, in terms of long-term costs to the town, not just in terms of savings on maybe the operational side for injuries and all, but costs on the capital side for wear and tear on vehicles because they're on, they're on calls more often and driving more miles.
You're, you're going to see, I would say, yes, you're, you're going to see, see in, in Greece where, 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 where interiors, if the trucks, 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 the trucks are out, around more, that's a given. You, you're, we're going to add, add, we're going to add miles and that, and that type, type of thing. It means that repair, repair costs are proper, probably going to, going, going, going to, to increase in fuel, fuel costs. But we did, did this because we want to make sure that we have good pay patients, better pay patient out, out, outcomes in the data, data shows, shows, shows that that, that that's what, what, what happens. Yes, the, the other, the other benefits are going to be less, less chance, chance of injury in, 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 in injuries to, to our folks and that type of thing. But the drive, drive, the drive, driving force behind this change was patient out, better pay, pay, pay patient out, 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 outcomes. And you know, I don't want to sound too dramatic, but I will, I guess, I mean, what, what cost do, do, do you put, put on, 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 on that? We're in, in, in the business of taking, taking care of people the best way we can. And this, and this, and this, this was one, one of those ways. And it was based on data, data, solid, solid data. And, you know, Paul, Paul, like, 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 like to say that, you know, Amherst should be at the forefront of innovative. That type, type, type of thing. This is an example, example of that. So.
I'll just, I'll leave that in because me and Joe, your first question. In fact, locally between Northampton and East Hampton, which are two of the other larger EMS agencies in Hampshire County, we were the last one to do this. In fact, Northampton has been sending an engine for as long as I can remember. And East Hampton either sends a squad, but they, they're staffed a little, they're staffed less than we are and have to, to kind of manage their options a little bit differently. So we do this because we're doing both the firing EMS simultaneously. And sometimes that means that engine that's going, only might have just one person on it. Sometimes it might be two people or it can be as much as three. Cause they're always keeping their ear and eye out for the next call that's behind them. And, and so it's a way to use all the, the pieces as efficiently as possible.
And Andy, if I can just add to that, we did ask, and what Jeff just said, we did ask, could we send a different type of vehicle to those types of calls? But, you know, Jeff filled it, you know, which I think we all thought made sense is if there's a call that comes in while they're assisting one of these calls, they want to be on the truck and ready to respond immediately and not have to drive back to a station to get into a, you know, different vehicle or to get a truck. So that's why having an alternative type of vehicle might not work.
The last piece I'll add to this is that there was an AMR. A large ambulance service, if you're not familiar with AMR, they're nationwide ambulance services. And one of their data points is that a back injury costs an average of about $60,000. Significant back injury is worth about $60,000. So for a company that is, you know, labor intensive and we spend 90% of our, all of our money is on personnel. So I think just for relativity sake, when you, you put that out against fuel costs and even maintenance costs, those back injuries really add up and they, they hit us in multiple ways.
Thank you for that. I just request next year for capital planning that, that that data be sort of translated into what a new replacement schedule might need to look like, given the change in practice. And then Andy, if I could have your indulgence for one more thing, I forgot to ask my other question, which is this budget document talked about community paramedics and changing from an EMS response to a community paramedic response and how that might cost. Or so could you talk a little bit more about what the difference between that is and the reason for changing from one type of service to another? And, and I might be describing it wrong because I don't actually understand what it's talking about. But it was in the key challenges, long range objectives, I think is where it was. You know, to assess the implications of how the EMS transition to community paramedicine will impact activity level and the way the town delivers EMS. And I just didn't, can, can you talk more about that and the cost and what, what those differences are?
So this gets a little bit into Kathy's question earlier, when we talked about sort of that, how, how we might be able to bill for it. The community paramedicine is, is essentially doing preventative EMS care in the same way we use fire prevention and try to, to decrease fires and, and you know, rescue responses in town. So sort of apply that same principles and how we could do less perhaps emergency transports to hospitals, which in the healthcare world costs, you know, infinitely large amounts and increasing amounts of money every year. How do you prevent those? And this trickles down all the way to the local EMS agencies. Can you go to houses and do wound care that sometimes has been covered by other things? Can you do post-surgical follow-ups and be able to have dialogue with primary care doctors? Looking for alternative locations to take patients. So that's really the, sort of the heart of the mobile integrated healthcare effort statewide. And we know it's coming down the road. We're just not sure where we're going to intersect with it and how to intersect with it yet. And what it would take is, is using our paramedics. Strangely enough, a number of our paramedics have started going to nursing school. It's a little bit different skillset, but you know, an increased level of knowledge, you know, that they bring with them when they come to work, based on their education. And how can we use that to do less transports to, to an emergency department that may not be able to always help them? You heard us talk early with Earl and Scotty talking about, you know, emergency departments are not really built well for mental health cases. They're not built well for substance abuse cases. We need to look at different models in the future to try to take care of folks.
Thank you. Need to move a bit along, Dorothy?
Just a very quick question though, it's true that the budget, the finance hearing is more, the most interesting meeting of several weeks. Okay. This has been very, very informative. What does unconscious over 30 mean? That was a.
So an unconscious patient, a patient that's not responsive. But we know in our demographics with the student population, we take care of the alcohol and being unconscious is not an uncommon call response. Do we go to say for college students, Friday and Saturday nights in particular? We're not sending an engine to every one of those because we know we can manage them because of our experience and taking care of them. Larger, we can manage those with a two-person, single ambulance. As opposed to, you know, the rest of us in this room, if you're unconscious, there's probably a significant medical reason for that and we want to take care of that. It's probably not just about alcohol. So we send more help to do more work than we would probably need to do for the unconscious 18-year-old male at a certain dorm on campus.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And what, what that, one thing we, we didn't talk, talk about when, when, when we send in this, this engine to a call, we, we have a set of criteria that we use that we're, where we will just send only an ambulance or an ambulance and a, and, and an engine. So, so we, again, we, and this, this, dispatch has, has that. So it's a set, we, we, we've, we came up, came up with criteria, criteria to dictate what, what level, level, level we'll send, send to, to a call.
So I'll make my pitch to, you know, that the police department brought up changing out IMC and change it to a different dispatch format. One of the limitations of this old IMC format is it really can't help us tell you exactly how many of these co-response type calls there are and how they go out just because of their limitations on the IMC side. So I'll make my pitch that if there's money in the future finance capital to, to go after that, it would help us as well.
So first of all, I want to really appreciate the fact that two, actually three, because Anna had to leave, of our counselors who are on JCPC have been part of this meeting. And the ability to ask the kinds of questions they've asked, particularly as it relates to the use of engines and the whole area of replacement schedules and so forth. And so I just want to acknowledge that and say that it's a perfect example where some counselors get into areas much more deeply and then they bring it to other discussions. And so Kathy, Mandy, Joe. And then they bring it to other discussions, and so Kathy, Mandy Jo, and Anna who had to leave, thank you for doing that. Um, so I really wanna ask about reimbursement and uh insurance because. Clearly, being one of those aging members of the Amherst population, I want the best cut healthcare out there. And if you make a difference between my living because you were able to get to my home with better equipment and better trained people. Uh, and if I didn't need to go to the hospital or you were able to get me there but still save me, I I appreciate all that. How much of my insure, what is my insurance gonna re reimburse for those two vehicles? For those additional people and so forth, and part of the reason I'm looking at that. Is because that money is part of what goes in then to buying the new equipment. And if we need to be looking at new healthcare models. That we as an or as a town decide, you know, like CBS has become, you know, a healthcare hub. If we're gonna be getting into those new models, I'd like us to make sure that we look at the um financial. Relationship of those models to the model itself and our ability to pull it off and maintain it. Because what I'm hearing is a sea change, it's an exciting sea change, but I'm worried about the finances.
So, the reason those things changed, at least particularly nationwide, is really about money. It's about insurers. So, for perspective, about fifty-two percent of the folks that we transport from the Amherst Fire Department, and this. This is similar across a large portion of Hampshire County. Honestly, it was similar numbers in Hadley and and my folks in Northampton have similar demographics, about fifty-two percent. Are covered by Medicaid, Mass Health, or Workman's Comp. Which means those are structured formats for reimbursement. So Lynn, if we come to your house tonight, we take you to the hospital. And we charge you three thousand dollars. Medicare is gonna give us about four hundred and fifty bucks. So when, if you have constituents who come to you and say, how come the ambulance costs are so expensive? It's largely about reimbursement, and it's about the fact that half the people we take care of have a fixed amount of reimbursement. And that doesn't mean that the other forty-eight percent are all on private insurance. Insurance is changing. So I talked to a gentleman yesterday, who took care of his wife back in December, and he was very happy with the care. He got this bill for twenty-three hundred dollars and wanted to know why it was so expensive, and I point him in the direction of, we use that money. About two-point-two million dollars in fees, most of it comes from ambulance fees. To help cover the operational budget of the department and to make sure that services are available. So, a lot of folks that we might take care of in the preventative side probably live in a fixed insurance format. That we get limited money for, so if you're Mass Health, we're probably, if you're a Mass Health patient, we're probably getting two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for that transport regardless of what it costs us. If we take care of a Medicare patient, it's probably for between three-fifty and four-fifty, depending on what you're signed up for. And if you're Medicare A versus Medicare B, Medicare A doesn't even cover ambulance services. So that becomes bill patient, and if you're Medicare B, they probably wanna copay um that goes with it, so. This actually is looking at it from a financial standpoint as much as anything else, because we're really limited. And what we can uh receive from patients that have those fixed um insurance formats.
Thank you, Jeff. I really appreciate that other side of that one.
Hey, other questions? Well, I wanna thank um Paula Z from Fire Department uh who've uh stuck with us for such a. Long period of time, we really appreciate it. It's been very informative and I think will help us, but also as has been pointed out. Uh, when we get back to the capital budgets, it wasn't just about operating budget, but uh. Tim, Lindsay, Jeff, thank you so much for having spent the time with us this morning. And um, thank you for all that you do in the community and. To be at our side when we need you.
Not a problem.
So um. I think that we wanna do um is try and finish uh public safety and um. Hey, let uh Earl for the first time. Uh, meet the finance committee, meet with the finance committee and uh. Tell us a little bit about your perspective on the budget for your department and see if there are any questions. That come your way.
Yeah, this is a, well, this is a scary part of the job I didn't anticipate, uh, but I'm excited for it nonetheless. Um, accomplishments are pretty, pretty small. I've only been here a couple months. Um, our main focus has been relationships. Um, this is a town that is a real community and. Uh, you know, I and the folks who join this team will need to do legwork to make sure that we are good neighbors, good citizens. Good partners, uh before we can ever do a response that's meaningful, we need to demonstrate that we care about this place and. Um, I want you to know that I care about this place. Um, I have been supported greatly by everyone. Um, the budget that Paul has put through is um absolutely gonna meet our needs, and I think more importantly. I've heard a lot of folks um in the last couple of days question if I could get support if I need it, and I have no doubt of that. Um, I have no doubt that when things have come up and I've needed something, uh as far as a communication system. Uh, Michael and and Tim and Scott have dropped what they were doing to make things work for me. Um, they have been incredibly supportive. Um, we're in implementation. Well, we need to stand up. Um, so uh what you may expect from us next year is that we will make sure we do things in a way that moves. Um, mindfully and is trying to solve actual issues, so. Um, kind of as opposed to saying what we think are challenges at the schools, we're gonna spend times at the schools and learn from the folks who are there. Um, we're at the senior center, I I painted some tulips poorly. I wouldn't put it on my resume, but but really, you know, that sort of thing is is really important and. Um, you know, we have a lot of sweat equity to put in before we before I'll be here asking for more, um but we are gonna grow. And and we will, we will someday need more, and uh I I feel comfortable asking for it when the time is, but right now, um it's it's time for us to work. We will.
Kathy, I didn't know if you had done anything.
No, I actually, um Earl, if you, but you just to lead into my only question, because as you said, I couldn't read in the thing, but. The sense that you're building teams, even if they're not sitting next to you with. Uh dispatchers with EMS, what I just heard with um this notion of paramedics, um I. You know, in and I just keep thinking of some international models that that deliver care differently and are using. The social service, mental health in combination, so. Um, I just have to say welcome, because I think that kind of thinking is what's gonna put. Um, do us all well and painting tulips at the senior center sounds like a perfect way to meet seniors to me, so. And it's this, you know, sense of you're out there and been very visible, so I guess the only question I have is because you were in the news. With working with the school system, and we just heard that the police don't, um is your sense that uh. Potentially that will be a role for CRES um over time?
Oh, absolutely. It al already is. Um, so I chaperoned the middle school dance a couple weeks ago. Uh, what a time to be alive. Um, I'll be helping the chaperone at the high school at the prom uh week from this Friday. Uh, we are gonna be working with some um students who have volunteered to be kind of active bystanders uh at the school next year. We're gonna provide them some training over the summer. They're gonna participate with CRES. Uh, we're working with Summit Academy. Um, to build up some capacity in in those youth. Uh, I'll tell you, I I identify a lot with those those young folks, so wanted to make sure that they feel is is. Um, supported in this town as I have been is important. Um, and really working across all of them, some of the the most important things we've done, there really has been just. Giving folks a break. Um, the school staff are are all really stretched, so one of the things we're planning for next year is that. Crest will have some role in helping with the cafeteria um withholding a lunchroom at the middle school. Not just because it gives them a break, but it gives us a chance to meet the students there, to shake hands, to get to understand where they're coming from. Um, so we're thinking of ways in which we can solve problems kind of across systems while also providing an additional resource and and getting a chance to meet folks, so. Um, we're gonna be really busy at the school and and grateful for it. Uh, those are our future residents of this town, and they should get the full benefit of this immediately.
Randy?
Thank you. Um, and you know, I I wanna say, say to you, Earl, that everything you've said today, including when we were discussing. Police department and all sounds fantastic, the building up of the system and not wanting to overburden the new responders as you hire them and sort of. Building them, it sounds like to when they become sort of the supervisors and can train the next sort of set of hires and all. Um, so I I I think everything sounds great. I do have a couple of questions about funding, and some of these might be for Paul more than you. Um, will some of the services that you provide be reimbursable by Medicaid or Medicare, and if so, um are we intending to aim for those reimbursements? Um, and then the next one is with your work with the schools. I wholly support that work. Um, but I ask this of DPW regularly, one of our schools is a regional school that gets funding from not just our town, but three other towns. Um, and then there's also the school budget that sells, which is just another line item in our larger budget that we're looking at right now. And how are those funds distributed between them? Is there going to be sort of a chargeback to the. The regional school for the services that you're gonna be providing them, um, you know, and all of that. It's not to say I don't want you providing the services, but you know, I I ask it when we do the DPW does the maintenance and the lawn care. How do we as a town sort of receive the benefit of the fact that that school system has three other towns paying into it? Um, and so that maybe that could subsidize some of this program, and that might not be a question you can answer, that might be more for Paul or Sean. Um, but are we looking at for those cross-departmental services um? A way to particularly for the regional schools um receive funding from the regional schools for that?
Wanna answer that first part, cause the second part I am wholly unqualified for, uh, but the first part is. Um, yeah, I mean, I think we're working with state providers, we're having conversations about um what billing would look like, how could we be eligible? It's a very complicated thing, it takes a long time. Um, and certainly, I mean, we. The good thing is I know the folks there, so we're gonna have honest conversations about, you know, would that be a replication? Um, we are, we are having active conversations with everyone who might benefit from our resources about how we can share. Now, this is a partnership. Obviously, we're the new kid, so we will be expending most of the energy at the beginning. Uh, but give us a year or two in the value we add. I I I think folks won't have a problem contributing back and. Um, and I also know that there's some behavioral health things coming down the road. Um, in the next two or three years around who's eligible for Medicaid billing, that will be incredibly valuable, so. Um, I guess more to be continued, and hopefully this is my last round of unsatisfying answers. Pretty soon, there'll be work. Uh, Paul, please say, or anyone else, the the second part?
Yeah, so I think a big piece of um the way we've conceptualized this is, which is different than Northampton and other communities, is that this is a a third leg of. Public safety, so along those lines, we don't charge the schools if the police respond or the fire department responds. I mean, if there's gonna be a steady, ongoing relationship that we're gonna have someone stationed there from Crest, or there's gonna be, we might look at that as a partnership with the school. But again, I think it's really important for us and Earl and and it is, I think one of the things that. Has been really powerful about the development of this program, why it's getting so much attention, is that it has been super cooperative among the three agencies. I mean, Earl deserves a lot of credit, but I also think, you know, Mike Curtain, it it. This could have gone in a lot of different directions. It's going in a really positive direction because of the leadership in our police and fire agencies and the dispatch. Because they're saying, okay, the town wants this, how do we build to the best that we can, and they're very professional about doing that. And so I think, you know, we wanna continue to look at this as a public safety lens. I've had the conversations with Northampton, they look at it as a public health lens, and they're looking really different. It's a it's a direct, you know, very different approach. So, I think CSWG, and that was a mind-opening uh uh moment for me when they said, no, we really see this as public safety. And so we're, that's the path we're walking down, and I think that that's a pretty good path for us to explore right now.
Though I do feel like uh, we're just uh with the regional school question. Um, our neighboring communities need to have a better understanding of what it is that we provide to schools and public safety. When they start complaining about the assessment method.
There have been folks uh from some of the surrounding towns who started the process of reaching out to learn about CRES, what the process was like and. Um, understanding our capacity, so I don't think it's a conversation that, I just think, uh you you all know this better than anybody, it takes a while to wrap your head around it.
Andy, you've anything else I can ask Pam, because we're really running close.
Good, and thank you for that note, Andy, about um maybe we need to work with our regional school committee to start identifying all those areas. Um, that the town provides that don't show up in the budget.
Hi, thanks, and thanks to Earl for being here, uh and thanks to Paul for hiring him. Um. I was looking, I was trying to find the number for training, training costs as you go forward. And I'm wondering if you have some sense of of dollars that will be needed for training. Secondly, what kind of training do you envision and and who provides that kind of thing for you? I know this is hypothetical, but it needs to be in the plan.
This isn't hypothetical, uh, cause we're we're playing, we're scheduling those trainings right now. I would say the dollars, Sean, I may default to you, defer to you on the. The dollars piece of it, who's doing our training? Um, we put a priority on folks who have a. A mission that lines up with Crest, so that has uh equity, uh has some experience around public safety. Um, and and understands how to to train folks to work with communities. Um, we're working with the Wildflower Alliance, which was a recommendation of the LEAP report. Um, we're working with the CRG uh Community uh Community Conflict Resolution Group out of Springfield. Um, who work with folks in the criminal justice system to to support folks in the community. They have just a really, really thoughtful, well-done way of um dealing with concerning situations and things that may feel. Dealing with your own internal biases about someone else's action, which feels really important. Um, the MVC, nonviolent communication, we're actually getting that training from two-town uh residents. Um, Jay Levy uh from Elliot Home Services is offering, is is providing our housing training or working with houseless folks training. Um, and then we've basically anywhere we've been able to find a content expert, we've gotten one. Um, the other thing that feels really important is we're getting first aid. We 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 are public safety. So we wanna make sure that we also have the same fundamental training as public safety, so that when we show up. Even if we're not gonna play those roles, we understand what they're looking for, what they're assessing for, um, so we'll have a lot of um. You know, we call live drills, we're gonna bring in folks to role-play things, and we're gonna kind of practice what we're doing and then build training. I I wrote this uh. Uh, the other day, we're gonna train, practice, train, and then work, and so when you see us take a deliberative step, it's because. Um, we we wanna make sure, you know, sometimes if you're trained off just a little, people do what they're trained to do, and if you're trained incorrectly, then you'll you'll work incorrectly, so we're we're really. Um, at the intersection of that, we're also open to any ideas. Um, training uh like like our public uh safety sister agencies. Is gonna be kind of a regular and consistent part of what we do, uh so the training will never stop. The two months uh will come to a close at some point, but every, we're we're planning to have one day where everyone's in, so we can have a bit of an in-service.
Hey, Sandy, um, Earl, welcome to Amherst. It's nice to somebody with the. Background in human services, it's nice to see somebody who's got some extensive street level as well as management experience and in uh. In human services and DMH, I appreciate all that. Uh, question for you is around the operating expenses. Uh, thirteen thousand dollars is it seem to be a real robust amount of money, and I'm wondering how much of your current operating budget is actually off. Off-budget because it's it's grant-funded. Um, the other question is, I'm glad to see you. You've made repeated reference to the LEAP uh report, which is, I thought was pretty informative and had some excellent ideas in it around staffing and training. Um, have you given any thought at this point to um what you might do uh? Uh, for respite services uh or to secure a quote mental health bed? Um, given the 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 population would be working with, and uh. Have you given any thought to a case management role for uh for uh Crest?
Honors are, if I answer the part I can answer first and then you.
Yeah, go go right ahead.
You can get all budgety. Um, so, uh, yes, um. Trying to get that second part down, right? Um, so we are looking at some grants. Um, DMH has recently opened some grants up to us. Uh, to make us eligible for them, which is. DMH has recently opened some grants up to us to make us eligible for them, which is, is wonderful. And I think happened in a larger context for things like living room programs, drop-off centers, things like that. We're also kind of actively working as a stakeholder with state agencies to increase their access. And, you know, really, I think you, you hit a really key piece. The huge part of the mental health crisis in Massachusetts, in Western Massachusetts in particular, is the lack of beds. Is the reality that people are often needing to be moved across the state. So we, we are, it, that's going to take time. There's a new safe havens program opening up. There's a couple of them. There's more funding for them. We're going to make sure we have a real rollover those, particularly in getting folks back and forth from Amherst. The case management question, really glad you asked that one. We have within our current contract providers who can do some kind of longer case management. But as far as targeted, goal-specific, the sort of case management that, that, that is, I think, more time limited, we do expect to be able to do that. So, you know, for instance, someone is on the streets looking for some support, getting into a, a place, but then kind of meeting their basic needs for a month or two. Those are things that we anticipate being able to do. And it's part of the reason why, I know the nine one one calls are kind of, it's, it's easy to, to, to spend a ton of time on that. But actually, if all we do is respond to crisis, then we're just chasing our tail forever. So we're really trying to think of, how can the follow-up be something that provides some immediate sort of wraparound, a handoff to services that's meaningful, but also a warm connection back? If that person ends up in crisis again, we're hoping that they'll be able to call us directly. They'll have a number. We can show up. And so, you know, we, we really want to get upstream, which is the direction the department and the state are going. As long as we kind of keep meeting folks on their worst day, it's really hard to prevent those issues moving forward. So, and the good thing is I have a lot of really good mentors and there's no shortage of folks offering good ideas here. So I am, I am not a, I recognize that I'm not the, I do not have a monopoly on a good idea. So if you, if you have any thoughts, Bernie, I'm here for them now and I'll be here for them later.
Thank you.
And I'll just add quickly that the thirteen thousand in the operating budget, we knew that would be a starting point. And so this year we'll work with Earl and find out what that needs to be on an ongoing level. For this first year, we have both the DPH grant and the ARPA grant, which large portions of those funds are earmarked for training. And to the mental health piece, one of the things we are working or we will be working with Earl and Jen Brown is that we have an allocation from ARPA for five hundred thousand dollars for mental health. And it's to do some of the things that you described. And so we'll work with those two who are experts on how to best utilize those funds.
Yeah, that, that's great because I, I think Earl's running target when he said, we don't, if we just don't want to keep going in circles. You know, you don't, you don't, you don't want frequent flyers. You want to be able to encounter somebody to do the work you need to do with them and then get them into a safe, a safe place in terms of services, place to live. That's one of, I think that's one of the reasons why everybody refers to cahoots. I think one of the reasons why Whitebird Clinic has been so successful is because they, they're a full-service shop. You know, we, neither, Northampton will have to explore this as well. And I don't think there's, Ithaca's exploring this kind of thing. You, you know, there's a number of communities that are looking at it and being able to connect people up with services in a meaningful way and maintain a contact with them so that they know where to go if they start feeling uncertain. Is, is going to be real important. So thank you.
Yeah, I just, I just want to offer, it's not just, it's not just us reaching out. We're getting calls from folks all around the country at this point with new sorts of referral systems. We're working with an agency now that can do same-day medical assisted treatment prescriptions for folks where I, I think a lot of our challenges, there are folks way outside of Amherst thinking about solving them with us. And we're going to build a real network here and, and I'm excited. If you guys take nothing away from this, I'm still very excited.
We're glad you are. Yeah, Michelle.
I really appreciate that excitement, Earl. I think we all are. And so I have a comment and a question. My question sort of related to the thirteen thousand dollars in the operating budget, which I heard it was sort of a start. My question is, how are we doing with recruiting the community responders? And given this is such an innovative program and department and we're sort of leading the way in this, are there ways that if recruitment is not going as you hoped, that we could be marketing in different ways or finding ways to get the word out about this in different channels that maybe weren't initially considered?
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's easy to be radical until you have to go out and do it. And I think that's the thing we're facing. I think there's a lot of people on paper who would like to be here, but it comes down to the reality. I can't promise folks that. I, I can promise them this won't be easy work. This is going to be challenging work. The shifts are going to be long. I, I think you all heard Chief Nelson talk, Chief Livingston talk about, you don't necessarily get to pick your days off. And you can be asked to fill in more. We're getting good candidates. I would say we're not getting huge numbers of candidates, but the people we're getting are good. I'm proud of the amount of internal candidates we're getting of people from this town who've seen this process who want to join us. And people who work in, in human services who want to join us. Some of it is, I think, this is the scariest part possible. It was scary for me to think about joining this because I don't know what it looks like. None of us will know until we start taking calls. So we're balancing, trying to make it attractive. And I think it is attractive. The pay is certainly attractive in the context of, of what human services pay. The fact that it's a union pension position is meaningful. I think it'll be easier when we start going and I can say, well, this is what the work looks like, or you could come do a ride along and see it. I, I give tours in that kind of space without a carpet all the time, just trying to have people see my vision. But once there's something there, if you know anybody, if anybody knows anybody, I have found that it's, it's much easier when we can have an individual conversation with someone about what is a, their skills at and, and really telling people that we want to, we want people. So the things you're good at, we want to make sure we empower you. We did, we did, you know, we, we were ultimately able to find someone for a program assistant. And without, you know, getting into details of that person, it is an incredibly competent, qualified person who, you know, if tomorrow I, I couldn't make it in, would be capable of leading this department. I heard someone say eight supervisors, you know, my goal is that we have 10 directors that as these programs pop up, that there are folks coming from the Amherst Crest Department to start these. I don't think this is the last one. But I do think we get to be first and that's a real, so whoever, there's a, maybe it's apropos since we just hired someone from Notre Dame, that those who stay will be champions. I believe that.
And thank you, Earl. And just one comment. In this conversation, it sort of became clear to me that there are maybe a lot more services that you envision Crest being able to provide. And I think as a council, it would be really good for us to stay sort of on top of that and, 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 or, or at least sort of be aware and abreast to those, as, as, as the program evolves and expands and the ways that we can think about it. I can imagine that sort of getting lost on us and then, oh, you know, so I just, I'm, I'm really saying that, I think to Lynn and fellow counselors is just like for us to really be aware of all of the ways that, that the community can be served by the Crest Department.
I realize I skipped one part of your question, Bernie. I just want to circle back to it. The LEAP report is like the Bible. I read it like twice a week. I really, I, I appreciate that that was put together. People across the state read that. I meet with the LEAP folks two to three times a month. They're going to continue to be involved in our world. And now we're helping them to provide support to other towns that are considering this. One of their recommendations was that they come back at some point to do another evaluation. And that's something we're kind of in the very early stages of, of discussing. So we certainly won't, we're, we're going to start a lot of new work, but we won't give up good work that's already happened.
Hey, thank you for that. I would encourage all the members of the council to, to read that Amherst Community Responder Report. I think it was really well done. It's got a lot of good ideas and a lot of the questions that are coming up. And there are lots of suggestions to, to respond to them. And thank you, Earl, for, for affirming that.
Okay. I see no other hands in the council and we really need, or the committee, and I think we really need to move a longer conclusion. I need to do just one or two things. One is that officially I need to ask whether there's any members of the public in attendance who wish to be recognized for public comment. And I don't, I think the answer is going to be probably not. But I, I do need to ask and of course, public comments always welcome. So if I don't see hands go up, I'll keep an eye out for a hand up. But I go on to the other couple of comments that I have so we can conclude and adjourn. The other thing I related to public comment is, I said this earlier, just for the benefit of our resident members, there were a number of written public comments that came in in relation to SJS hearing that we're going to work to figure out a mechanism to get them to you in the most efficient manner so that you have the benefits of the written public comments that the counselor member, council members of the committee have. And we, Athena is, is working with us to find the most efficient way to get that done. Another thing that I just wanted, two other things that I want to note is that I think that there's an issue that has to do with public safety that we really haven't addressed that was extremely evident in all of that written public comment as well as in public comment that we received during hearing itself in verbal form. And that is people questioning the judgment in those behind the town manager's recommendation on how to fund the various arms of the public safety budget. And in particular, making assertions that we were inadequate, that he was recommending inadequate funding for Crest and too much funding for police, to be blunt about it. We have not had the opportunity and did not really get into that issue today. I think when we get to discussing as a finance committee, our recommendation to the council on the budget, we may need to make some reference to that and some findings on it. And I don't know if anyone, either Paul or Earl, or I'm not expecting any comments from anybody today about it. But it is sort of this elephant that's out there in the room and we can't, I'm not sure that we can totally ignore it when we come back. So the last thing that I.
I just want to say, which is, we're going to be standing up. We're going to need all the resources we can get. So I, you know, whatever that means for folks, I just want to say that like, we have had great partnerships with our other public safety agencies and we're going to need that for the next year. So just for your consideration.
And I appreciate that and we will, I think the committee does, is going to have to have that conversation as to whether that they want to respond to that in its report to the council. And the last thing that I just wanted to get again, for the benefit of our resident members who weren't, didn't stay with the entire council meeting yesterday after the hearing was over, is that there was a referral that we are going to need to take up, not during the budget season, but pretty quickly afterwards, which was the request of the African Heritage Reparations Union to talk about marijuana revenue and assuring that, and, and their recommendation that marijuana revenue go to reparations fund. And that was referred to the finance committee and is going to be something that we will need to work into our discussions once we complete the budget discussions. But I wanted to make you aware of that referral. So I don't have anything else today. That was my one thing that I was referencing at the beginning that was a within the last forty-eight hours, probably more likely in the last, in the twelve previous hours. But in any event, turn it to Lynn and Kathy since your hands are up and then Michelle. But let's try and be real quick because we are after 12 o'clock already and I want to get us adjourned, but Lynn. Lynn, you don't have anything then?
I do. I'm sorry. I, I'm trying to see if I should adjourn the council. One, two, three, four, five, six. Oh no, we still have seven. Yes, I want to ask a clarification on the assignments for Thursday. I have DPW, but I, it was a little unclear to me whether I also have the enterprise funds.
Yes, I believe you took all of them.
So I have everything for Thursday.
Yes, I did. I did warn to split them up. Don't forget, I did warn that, but, but you wanted.
Thank you. I just want to invite counselors individually to send me any questions they have. Okay?
Yeah. And I do want to remind people that on Thursday, I will be convene the meeting at the beginning, but immediately turning it over to Kathy, who's going to be chairing the, in managing the entire meeting. Once we have completed, started meeting. So just say that again. Kathy?
That was actually what I was going to say. Andy has asked me to chair next Thursday. So in addition to Lynn's request that she amalgamate, and I didn't make that with the police EMS. But I didn't share, I didn't share the questions I sent Sean, but I would like, I, my request would be is you get a composite. Could you, could we see them maybe at the beginning of the meeting? So we just know what has already been asked. And I don't know what, it's your name to answer it now because I just, Mandy was waiting to see if I would ask something. I had a couple of things on the list that I didn't go into. It just, it would be useful if Lynn, I will send you whatever I have, but I'm going to be chairing it. So that was my only just comment. Yeah.
Same. Michelle?
Yeah, following up on assignments, I have general government, which I realize is really big. And I want to make sure I get my questions in as far enough in advance as possible so that perhaps even we can have written answers for, prior to the meeting. I think general government is a week from today. So just asking if counselors have any questions to please send them to me as, as Lynn did. And I also wanted to say to Andy, and I can't see you now. Oh, Andy. I did send the public comment with respect to the HRA's request to our non-voting members. What I had so far, as well as the memo that I wrote for counselors. But I really appreciate that there's a, in, something in the works that will make that a little bit easier as we move forward with, with that discussion. And any discussion that the non-voting members might want to have public comment for. So thank you.
Yeah. And I want to thank you for having made that forward. It saves me one step because my next thing would have been after the meeting adjourned today to go through what we had yesterday in the packet and see if there's anything that needs to be forwarded to them. And you've taken care of a piece already. So thank you. So no hands up. There's nothing else that I'm aware of on the agenda. And for, I guess I'll declare the meeting adjourned.